Good evening and welcome to the August 18, 2025 meeting of the City of Tuscaloosa Planning and Zoning Commission. Any written comments sent to staff or forwarded to the commission directly. At this time, I'd like to introduce our staff. We have Mr. Jimbo Woodson, Deputy City Attorney, Michael Garner, City Engineer, Zach Pons, Director of Planning, Leota Coyne, Principal Planner. There are nine members of the Planning Commission, all whom are appointed by the mayor for staggered terms with the exception of the City Council representative, who is appointed by the City Council. I ask the commission members to introduce themselves and state their occupation for the record. Our Mr. Rumsey.
Steven Rumsey, Business Owner.
Dana Prince, Attorney.
Portia Clark, 311 Manager.
Vince Dooley, UA Campus Planning.
Ann Hornsby, Attorney.
Raven Howard, Councilwoman.
Eddie Pugh, Retired.
Bill Wright, Business Owner. There were sign up sheets located outside for public comment. Four speakers are allowed to speak in favor of a petition and four speakers are allowed to speak in opposition of a petition. All speakers will be having a maximum of five minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. The next procedure is the commission will take up the items in the order of the final agenda. The commission will initially receive a presentation from the staff as to the details of the agenda item. Additionally, we may hear certain matters involving the same property such as an annexation and a zoning matter concurrently, although we will take separate votes on each matter involving the same property. After the staff presentation, we'll then call upon the petitioner to present their case. The petition will have a maximum of 10 minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. At the conclusion of the petition's remarks, we'll then call upon any party in order of sign up who desires to support the petition thereafter, call on anybody who wishes to oppose the petition. When it's your turn for comment, please introduce yourself stating your name and address to the commission, provide your remarks, and do that at the microphone, please. Again, any written comments have been included into the record. After receiving the remarks of those who opposed the petition, the petitioner will have an opportunity to respond to those objections. Any rebuttal will be limited to two minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. If the petitioner presents any new information in response to your objections, the commission will allow those who oppose the petition the opportunity to respond to the new information only. Any response will be limited to two minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. During the course of this presentation, you may be interrupted by any member of the commission for clarification or additional information. Such interruptions will not reduce your time. Once the commission members are satisfied they have received all relevant information, we'll then close further discussion by the public, at which time the commission members will discuss the matter and then vote. After the vote, you are free to leave. These proceedings are video recorded and broadcast live. All in-person public comments should be made at the podium into the microphone. Jurisdiction. In all matters pertaining to the following items, this commission serves as the final authority. Subdivisions located within the city limits, subdivisions located outside the city limits but within the city's planning jurisdiction, developments with special district, and four approval letters for developments in historic district buffer zones. As to all remaining agenda matters including annexations, rezonings, planned developments, and street vacations, this commission serves as a recommending body to the City Council. In that regard, our decisions are in the form of a recommendation to be presented to the City Council. The City Council will make the final decision on those matters. Subdivision approval requires the affirmative vote of six members of the Planning Commission. All matters which are recommendations City Council require a majority vote for an affirmative recommendation. Do any members of the commission have any conflicts of interest as to any agenda matters before tonight? If so, please state for the record. Having heard none, I would ask the staff to confirm on the record that proper notice has been given to all parties in interest as required by law as to all matters before the commission tonight.
It has.
Okay. With that, we will begin the approval of the minutes. As the Planning and Zoning Commission has received the synopsis of the July 2025 meeting, I move that we dispense with the reading of those minutes of the same unless there are any deletions, additions, or corrections. All those who are in favor approve of the July 2025 meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
Good evening, Commission. Starting off tonight with the consent agenda, we have four items here. To clarify on S 8125, this is for eight condominium units. That was clarified after the legal notice was published. We did not have anyone sign up out front. Do you need anything from staff?
I'm sorry, I was trying, my screen was off.
Oh goodness, I'm sorry. I was just clarifying. Yeah, this is a consent agenda on S 8125. It's actually for eight condominium units. That was clarified after the legal notice was published. We did not have anyone sign up out front.
Okay. So, Commission, we have a consent agenda, listing of S 7125, S 7525, S 8125, S 8225. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
All right, moving into our cases requesting to continue, we have one tonight, that is S 7625. They're working with the county on a variance before coming before you all. I believe they are here if you'd like to have them come up.
Please. Petitioner.
Good evening. Jamie Autry, 3531, 18th Avenue Northeast. And there's a waiver that we're waiting on from the county, which should be voted on in the next week or so. So we'll be back next month with this item.
Any questions for the petitioner? Commission forwards have a continuous request of S 7625. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
All right, moving into unfinished business, we have a companion case, resurvey of Lot 1, MI Harper number 2. You all saw this last month, is rezoning from SFR 1 to MR 1 at 2100 and 2102 5th Avenue East, as long as a subdivision of .84 acres into five lots. You can see we are just west of Snow Hinton Park, near Midtown Village. You can see that property today, it has two existing homes, we're just north of that roundabout on 5th Avenue East. And you can see they're zoned SFR 1, they touch SFR 3 to the north and southeast, as well as MFR on the other side of the property. They'd like to rezone from SFR 1 to MR 1 to allow for more dense housing. You can see that property today, those existing structures on there, as well as 21st Street East. Here is that subdivision, you can see those five lots here. That was last month's submission, let me clarify. Moving into this month, you can see those changes, they're proposing sidewalk to be built during the construction phase, they will be requesting a variance from that tonight, as well as widening 21st Street East to 20 feet in width. Here is that revised site plan, you can see a wood fence to the north, as well as that parking proposed at the rear of the buildings, and that access from 21st Street East. Here's just a sample of the images that were in the packet, so we have two front elevations, a side, a rear, some renderings of what those could look like, moving to the rear and side, and again, more were in the packet. And here's three houses nearby, I'm just kind of showing you a sample. In terms of framework, this area is identified as traditional neighborhood edge. This plan does conform, as well as the use, they both conform to framework. You can see that identified here, that traditional neighborhood edge. Moving into our permitted uses, you can see those highlighted for MR 1 here. And moving into this slide, we did receive two public comments before you last month, you've received one additional this month. Moving into the subdivision here, getting ahead of myself a bit, you see again that property, two existing homes to be removed to create those five lots, you can see here, without contours as well, and that revised site plan. Do you have any questions for staff on this one?
Engineering on sidewalk variance request.
So we can waive the sidewalk variance for the approval of the plat tonight. Before they record the plat, they'll have to post a bond for those public improvements. And then with the first building permit, that'll trigger them to install that sidewalk.
I'm sorry, he said that would trigger what?
Trigger the sidewalk.
Trigger the sidewalk. Is it by a lot, or would it be for the entire sidewalk?
It needs to be for the entire sidewalk.
We talked about that.
We're, you know, the subdivision regulations really state that the sidewalk should be put in, in advance of plating the lots. But we've kind of set a precedent on a few others here in the past year or so, where we allow them to bond that sidewalk, record the plat, but then put the sidewalk in when the construction activity begins.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, Chris Centel, Centel Engineering, Tuscaloosa, Alabama. The staff did a really good job with answering, with presenting it. We added the wood fences requested to show we're setting a barrier to the west. I think the comments that we had were parking, the comments said two parking spaces, but we're, those are 10-foot spaces and we can go up to 40 feet, which if you did eight-foot spaces, that's five. So we're providing plenty of parking for three and four bedroom unit. As far as the sidewalks go, I mean, I agree with the city, if the city wants them put in at the beginning, we're just trying to preserve the integrity of the sidewalk, and so during construction. So if we can, and these are custom homes, we're not planning on building all five of them at one time. So, and somebody's already contacted us that was here last time, it's interested in purchasing one of them, so.
In the previous meeting, we also discussed the 21st Avenue East section of the road, because it's such a narrow road.
That's why we continued the first, one of the continuing items was, I had to check with the developer, and he was, I texted him and said, "We need to widen 21st," and we do. So, it's really too narrow.
Engineering and staff, are you okay with that improvement?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we're good with that.
Any questions?
Can you back up the slide to show, we're taking one lot, one current lot, that lot right there, okay. And they're going to, I was trying to figure out, the front of the houses will be on 5th Avenue?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I see now.
And we're parking to the rear, and at the city's request, one driveway.
Right, okay.
So, three, it's a three-bedroom house?
Three, and I have done four-bedroom houses too, but I think three-bedroom is what other people were interested in.
We'll back up the drawing with the number of parking spaces behind each lot.
I show, if you see the two to the farthest south, I'm showing four parking spaces, just in case if you want a four-bedroom. But since they're custom, we don't really know, I mean, if somebody comes to us and wants to build a three-bedroom house, then.
Lot, this called the corner of 5th and 21st, a lot. So Lot 1 wants to build a four-bedroom, there are three parking.
There's enough room for four parking spaces.
That's the concern I would have, because you got to assume that, let's just assume they're student properties. I mean, you got to, because of where it is.
Yeah.
And you got four bedrooms, you're going to have four cars.
Yeah. If it's four bedrooms, we have to provide four parking spaces.
So no matter what, you're going to put, if it's a four-bedroom, you're going to put four on each lot.
Yeah.
So you're just losing landscape area, is that?
Losing landscape along the sides where we're parking, but everywhere else is green.
So, Chris, what, on assuming that the house on 21st Street is Lot Number 1, for instance, when they pull in there and they block that whole driveway and Lot Number 5 can't get out, we're going to just have a fistfight out there, or what's going to happen?
No fistfights.
What, is that just going to have to be, they're just going to have to work together?
Well, it's going to have to be set up as a homeowners association anyway, because we're going to have a shared joint drive. So, that would need to be addressed in the homeowners association about block drives.
Chris, just out of curiosity, does it hurt you to put the four there so you'd be covered if?
It doesn't hurt to provide for four, we can set that up, that's no big deal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because it's not like you're gaining a lot of landscape.
No, you're correct. And we can do the four wide at the time of permit, if that's what the city requests.
What's your comment?
He's asking if we can go ahead and just go ahead and just provide 40-foot width on the parking pad. We don't have a problem with that.
I don't have a problem with that either.
I mean, it just covers you in the future, you don't have to worry about.
Yeah, if you did the more narrow parking spaces.
So they're individual lots, individual houses, they would be?
Individual lots, individual houses.
So they ain't going to have five garbage cans, not going to do a dumpster?
No, no dumpster.
So on the?
So, don't we have landscaping requirements between houses like this? I mean, did they just go out the window with that, or what? I mean, look, it actually helps these houses to do what you're talking about, because when they have guests over, then you're going to have more parking like Vince was talking about. But I remember painstakingly Reynolds making sure there was a tree between every one of them, I just hadn't seen a tree yet. Did that get missed, or is that not required? Is that not required on one this size?
So this is strictly just conceptual, but yeah, we would, like, we don't even know if this could be technically constructed the way that he has it here. It's just the layout of the lots that you guys are looking at, and then they're going to have to come back and submit building permits and really, because, you know, they don't even, there's no identifying the side or rear setbacks, necessarily the distances and things like that, so it's hard to tell on this.
I doubt very seriously there's going to be a lot of landscaping done on that back property line against that one house with the six-foot fence.
Well, we're showing a row of landscaping trees along that edge.
Well, you know, we're going to have another case, not just very similar, you got, you have one house there, the house that's there currently, and they're going to have five different neighborhoods backed up to them. You know, my issue with the one by the towns a couple of months ago was, if I'm that owner there, I don't want to see five different properties and five different things on their back property line. It needs to be something very consistent and congruent across the whole property line. So, and that's not this discussion, but it's going to talk about and think about going forward.
But isn't this a lot?
That's in your HOA documents.
As far as landscaping, I mean, we want it to look nice. And this is not something you don't want, you don't want it to be run down, right from the start.
I just also worry about the, you're going to have your garbage pickup, I guess, on 21st?
That's correct.
So you're going to have five garbage cans out there on 21st, and if there's not really tight HOA, then, you know, we see this a lot, where you'll have garbage cans sitting out there for days on end.
We will address that with HOA for sure.
I mean, I see what you're trying to do, you're able to get two front streets, that's why you can do this on 5th Avenue, being your front street. I mean, it's like a pretty nice little neighborhood there. We're going to plop this right in the middle of it.
It's a lot.
Chris, I got a question.
Any more questions for?
Mike's got it.
How are you going to regulate the order in which these are sold? I mean, if the middle lot sells first, then somebody's got to build the driveway all the way to the.
The driveway's going to have to be constructed first.
I'm sorry?
The driveway's going to have to be constructed first.
So you plan to build the entire driveway at one time?
Yeah, that was part of the rundown, that we were, when we said this, if we're going to do individual lot sales, then it will have to be done first.
You would not build the parking spaces for the driveways or something?
You'd put the driveway in, and then as they build the units, then you would add the parking to it. And that's the only way it can be done.
Any more questions for petitioner? I think we do have someone to sign up, might come back and see us.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have Linda Parsons.
Good evening, I'm Linda Parsons, 2 Forest Lake Drive, and I'm here representing the Forest Lake Neighborhood Association. And my comments as last time are not going to really deal with the aesthetic of the property or the garbage carts or things of that nature. My concerns, as I mentioned last time, are the process. So, quick reminder, we'll delve into all of the details, but from 2019 until last December, we invited the entire community down here to talk about how zoning should work, to get some certainty. And Mr. Wright just brought up the house that's right behind this. That house thought they had certainty on what could be next door to them, if they indeed participated in the process. The current owner had this property during that time and could have participated in that as well. You all, during that very long process, listened to all the viewpoints, and the conversations that we had were respectful, thoughtful, and serious. As a community, we together agreed on what was best for our neighborhoods. Compromises were necessary during that time, but everyone had a chance to be heard. And now every property owner knows what they can do with their property and what can happen around them. My only concern is that the petitioner did not make that case at the time, and this is not a hardship case, this is a preference. I don't know how you justify making changes to the zoning so quickly after we made the decision, and I don't know what kind of message it sends to those who had input into that process. Further, my concern, as I mentioned last time, is that if you approve this rezoning, you've opened a door for every property in town. If one person can successfully request new zoning, then I think refusing the next request becomes difficult for you guys. In my experience in my neighborhood, petitioners often refer to prior cases to support their own requests. So you will have people directly refer to this case to validate their own similar rezoning request, or to even contest a decision if you say no. And it's for these reasons that my neighbors and I ask that you deny this rezoning.
Petitioner, you have any, you a chance to rebuttal, anything you might have heard, or?
The only response I have is when the city staff, we conform to the city standard, we're not creating a new zone, we're using what the city's offering as far as mixed residential one, so.
Yeah, I think I can provide a little bit of clarity on Ms. Parsons' comments. So, you know, we have the framework, you know, character map, and that shows what could be on this property. And again, as we went through that process, you know, traditional neighborhood edge doesn't exactly relate to what this zoning district is currently, it's one of a few different zoning types that could be on this property. And so, when we say, if you go to the, it does conform to framework thing, when we look at this, you see zoning request does conform to the plan, so the rezoning request does conform with traditional neighborhood edge in the sense of what you see here, you know, small lot attached to multifamily dwellings, having a single-family scale, that could be appropriate for this lot, or it could not be appropriate for this lot, you know, in the sense of the rezoning to get more density. So to Mr. Wright's point, you've got single-family homes, you know, however, it could have been more dense in this traditional neighborhood edge framework, identifying character type, but because they were single-family homes, this one went to that zoning designation. I'm not sure if that clarified a little bit, but.
Yeah, we did not want multifamily, we did not want apartments, which is across the street into the south. We want single-family homes, single-family residential lots.
Thank you, sir. Anyone care to speak for or against this petition request? All right, we'll close discussion. You know, I think, just because it could be, my question is, should it be? I mean, this, I understand what it could possibly be in this changing zonings and part of their requests. I feel like this is really sticking a brown hole in a square peg, and it doesn't really seem to fit very well there. I don't know, I just feel like this is, the neighborhood appears to be a solid neighborhood, a good neighborhood, it's got apartments behind, I get it.
Not a one of them here to oppose it. Not a one person here to oppose it.
No.
Which is a little, which is a little surprising, really.
Surprising.
Usually you have somebody oppose whether the sun's going to come up tomorrow.
Yeah, I just don't know, I understand that you can, you can ask for it, but again, does it make it right, make it appropriate for this area? I hate to see things opened up, and we're doing projects like this all across town.
But they are trying to rezone it from S, get all these things confused, SFR 1 to MR, multi-residential. All right, when you put the zoning map up, is the yellow?
Can we go to the zoning map?
Is it MR 1, or is it another distinction, Leota? No, the darker, I'm sorry. Is MFR different from MR 1? Like, what, if we did rezone this, would it be that kind of orangey color, or a different color? I mean, what color would it be?
What's MR 1 color?
So it is kind of in this palette of rust-yellow.
Yeah.
But in terms of the use, MFR is multifamily residential, what they're asking to rezone to is mixed residential, so there's more options. I'll pull up the table here so you can kind of see the permitted uses to get some clarity.
So that M stands for mixed, not multi.
That's correct.
All right, that's what, that's what.
Yeah, they're taking the.
How does the neighbor not show?
They're taking the ability to have two streets, and that, this street gives them the opportunity to do this.
Yeah.
There was a hot lot next door, they couldn't do it obviously.
Well, and I know it's called single-family, and I mean, I shouldn't make this assumption, but if you're going to have four bedrooms in some of them, I'm thinking students are going to live there, and that opens, not critical of students, but the garbage cart issue, not just the garbage cart issue, but the overflowing garbage cart issue. Some of them just leave them out on the street, they never bring them in, they just keep dumping.
I don't know that students live here.
Okay.
It's not, it's not a no-brainer, I can tell you that.
Now, that's.
I mean, entering college freshman is trending down. The number of housing units closer to campus has trended up, so you're having a lot harder time getting students, particularly in new construction, this won't be cheap, because it'll be new construction, to go here and pay top dollar.
And to build a house.
This is more likely to be workplace, workforce housing, in my opinion.
That's some interesting fact.
Any other thoughts from the commission, or questions of the staff that I might have?
I'll just say, this is in my district, so I want us to do what's in the best keeping to maintain the current integrity of the neighborhood. However, I do like the improvements that this development would bring, but I'm also concerned about the garbage carts, you know, if this is student housing. This is a problem that we've had throughout this area already, and I've had more dumpsters to come in, so that affecting the aesthetics of what's going on here is concerning. So I, point is, I'm torn, I'm deeply torn, this is definitely a hard one, because I know the need for workforce housing, but I also want to make sure that we're not creating a problem on top of other issues that I'm trying hard to maintain and control.
I have an issue with, I wish there was like three units instead of five. I don't even like to bring my garbage cart from the front of my house to the curb, and this one down, the whole way down to the end, I know they're not going to get theirs every week. And it's kind of, it's kind of, it's not dense, but it's dense. And when I look at the houses across the street and behind it, it looks like a traditional type neighborhood, and when I look at everything going into the neighborhood, I don't know, it just looks like, I wish there wasn't as many units. That way you have extra parking when you have visitors, mom and dad, or neighbors, or somebody came by to see you.
Anyone else?
Do we have dimensions for the lots?
Yeah. 50 feet.
50 by 133.
Fifty feet.
Fifty by 133. I just, I just want to go on record saying that I think five is a lot to put here. I agree with you, Mr. Pugh. Five is a lot to, to put there. It'd be different if it was three, maybe even four, but five is, it just seems. And I also think that it's still our responsibility to make a good decision, even though the neighbors didn't show up. We can't just assume that that means that they are nonchalant about this. I think we still need to consider them.
It's hard, it's hard to, it's hard to ignore an eight-foot tall metal sign that you pass by every day that says this property is in the process of being rezoned and there's a hearing on a certain date. I mean, it, it is, it is probably majority rental property all the way around it. I mean, I know that, I know that I own some property in the area. I know that if you look, you look at, go back to the other slide, Liotta. You look to the, I guess it's to the south, there looks to be about 100 and something units bordering its south, the south border. And, you know, while they've been trying to improve that, the owners of that apartment complex have worked to try to improve that and have. It's still what it is. But from this area, this looks like an all-American, Ozzy and Harriet neighborhood. I mean, putting five houses on this corner will materially affect this entire street. There's no question about it.
Zach, who got notice? And I see across, does the street, then you, you don't go across the street to give somebody notice, or do you?
So with a rezoning, it's within 500 feet of the property, regardless of the street?
Okay. But that's an apartment complex, so I guess the owner of the apartment complex would have gotten that notice across the street. And then the property to the west and to the north would have gotten mailed notice, correct?
That's correct.
How many houses down? Would like three of those houses? I don't know how wide those lots are, but three of the houses to the west and maybe three to the north?
It was about, from what my, she, she stuffed all of those envelopes. She said there was about 200 mailings for this one alone.
200?
We do send out a lot of mailings. And that could be that.
500 feet, we sent 200 on this?
Well, we had to also send the subdivision, which would only be adjacent properties. I'll, I'll dig in a little bit on that. That seems high, but either way, within 500 feet of this property. And it's pretty dense in this area. They, yeah. A lot of words for saying that these people did get notified that this was happening. And we do send them out two weeks in advance of the meeting.
You know, this may not be legitimate consideration, but I do worry about the precedent we set. And tonight, we did have Ms. Parsons from Forest Lake. And, but none of the people directly adjacent to the property. But two months from now, three months from now, we may have a similar piece of property and we might have 20 people show up to oppose it. And the petitioner will remind us that we approved a similar piece of property with a similar rezoning request. And I don't know if that's something we necessarily have to or should consider, but I just don't want us to hem ourselves in if there's a, if there's a similar piece of property that may even have more.
I don't think, I don't think in planning and zoning issues you have precedent because every property is uniquely different. I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't think we ever have to listen to someone and say, you did this for them. You know, I, I have mixed emotions. I look to the south and, you know, it's very high density to the south. I look to the east, it's very high density apartment complex to the east. You know, it's a, you know, to the north, what, if I have a problem with it, it's, it's more that we're going to take a lot in a subdivision that clearly when it was built, you know, there was no, there was no way you could tell that only the corner lot could be redeveloped and, and five houses put on it uniquely. And so we're going to change, we're going to change the personality of this, of this neighborhood. And I'm not sure that it'll be, it'll be for the better. On the one hand, new construction is a lot. And so you'll have new construction and new houses and reinvestment in an area that could spur up. But I don't know where you can go after that. Do you go across the street on the next corner? Or, because those are the only two lots that you can do that on, right? I mean, so you're not going to ever, you're not going to be able to get to these other lots, are you? Unless you, unless you buy them all. Not the interior. So, so really, you might have the same thing happen just north, right? If this is successful. You know, reinvestment in the area could be very positive. New houses. It could also, you know, it could also change. Raven, do you have any, are these, are these homeowners or these renters over here, do you know?
To the north? I believe, I know for sure there's one homeowner, but I can't be for sure so certain about the rest. And so I, like I said, I have a lot of mixed emotions because this definitely will change the, the feel and the integrity of the community. But I don't know if it'll necessarily be for the bad. But a few things that I do have issues about, I wish I can get some answers on. I, I think we just have to see how it works out in the process. But this already is a dense area. If you look to the south and you look to the west, so we, we do have a lot going on here.
I think the reason.
But this is, but this is recommended according to framework. So that's always maintained.
I think the reason, I think the reason it's approved by framework or possibly allowed is because we had a lot of discussions about urban infill for, for workforce housing. I mean, the only way to create housing, I mean, we, we've got a workforce issue. They can't, they can't afford houses in our community. And so by taking a lot, it's 50 by 150, it has one house on it, dividing it up into five home sites does lower the cost per home theoretically for the potential purchaser or renter or whatever product it becomes. And so we wanted to be a little bit more open to those type things. So this is, this is a great case study here.
Well, I, I will say this. For me, you know, considering this situation, I believe that we should look at everything on a case-by-case basis. So just because, you know, regardless of what happens here on this property, I don't think we can say that every case will fit every neighborhood in every situation. So that's how I feel about this. If this is recommended or suggested due to framework, I just think that, you know, we have considered all of the facts to make sure that that's possible. And it's in the best interest of all of the residents.
I, I like to think that we are consistent, but I never feel that we have set precedent that we are obligated to follow just because somebody else refers something similar to us. So I, I agree that every property is unique. And the reason that we're here the one by one instead of just checking boxes and saying this fits, this fits this category and we take all these things into consideration. So I, I do think it's worthy to consider whether the neighborhood and the neighbors themselves are concerned about it. And if we were in a, looking at a property where the neighborhood wise very concerned about it, then I think we can take that into consideration.
Also to that point, to clarify, we did touch the condominium that's right behind, is a very large property right behind, what is that called, Midtown? So that's where that 200, 276 total. Yeah, but aside from that one, you probably have about 60 to 70, you know, homeowners or, you know, small apartments.
All right, I feel like we've kind of, everybody's gotten their two cents in. Last minute comments, I think we're probably at the point where we'd take a vote. Everybody good with that?
I beg your pardon?
Ready to vote?
Oh, yeah.
All right, commission. Want to take two votes on this case for us? First, we have Z 1725, the construction petition to rezone the 8.84 acres from SFR1 to MR1 in conjunction with S 6325. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Hornsby?
Yes. No.
No.
Yes.
No. No.
Yes.
No. Commission, we have force S 6325. That is the reserved lot one. ML Harper number two with one variant request sidewalk construction. Engineering has a understanding with the developer that a bond would be posted that the construction sidewalk would occur by unit. Have a motion and a second.
Motion.
Is this the same case?
Okay, I have a question then, because I don't know. Okay, all right, since, you know, they, they can go to the city council even with a negative recommendation. And the city council would approve it. Then they would be able to build the subdivision as it is proposed. But, but right now, because it's still zone SFR whatever, it's not possible. So do we put, do, if we, do we put a condition on the city council approving the rezoning?
Right, so if the subdivisions denied, the rezoning could get approved, but then they'd have to come back and subdivide again. Or if the subdivision is approved, it would be contingent on that rezoning being approved because it wouldn't meet the ordinance. So no, no conditions or anything needed other than the variance for the sidewalk construction?
What are we voting on now?
Subdivision.
All right, so we had a motion and a second, correct? Mr. Rumsey?
Yes.
Yes? No?
Yes.
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 Motion approved. Next case.
All right, commission, moving into our cases to be heard. Starting off, we have a rezoning petition, that's Z 1925. Jamie Gray petitions to rezone approximately 0.55 acres, located at and around 2678 21st Street from NC to MR1. This is Council District Two. You can see here, we're just west of 359, kind of southeast of Central Elementary School and West Lawn Middle School. You can see that property today, there is an existing structure as well as those vacant parcels around it. You can see they are all zoned neighborhood commercial. They're surrounded by residential districts here. They'd like to rezone from NC to MR1 to construct single-family homes with accessory structures. You can see this is that existing building on site today and just a few additional photos of the surrounding properties. You can see this is the site plan we received. We cannot confirm if this is exactly what could be built without more information on the setbacks and additional information, but that's kind of their preliminary site plan here. Here's again that existing storefront and some examples of what could be built here. In framework, this area is identified as traditional neighborhood core. So this rezoning request does conform to the plan as well as the uses identified in the plan. You can see that identification here for traditional neighborhood core. In terms of, in, excuse me, in terms of our permitted uses, you can see MR1 highlighted here in yellow and continuing to those permitted uses here. We did not receive any public comment. Do you have any questions for staff?
Ma'am, thank you. Petitioner?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Chris Centel, Centel Engineering. This is an old neighborhood store. They want to tear it down and the lots already exist. So there are four residential lots and the same house that she's proposing would fit on those lots. So we want to take it back to the neighborhood, residential.
Any questions for petitioner? Thank you, sir. No one to sign up? Anyone care to speak for or against this petition request? Having heard none, this is a pretty easy one.
Yes, thank you.
Commission, before we have a rezoning request, Z 1925. Mr. Gray petitions to rezone 2678 21st Street from NC to MR1. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hornsby?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion approved.
All right, commission, moving into our next companion case. This is Hargrove Micro Park. This is three parts. So first, an annexation, rezoning, and then finally a subdivision. This is 2.3 acres located at 3311 and 3327 Hargrove Road East. Once annexed, they'd like to rezone to GC, General Commercial, and then do a lot consolidation for the subdivision. You all have seen this property before. And January came before you. You can see we're on Hargrove Road, just west and south of I-20 and Bowers Park. There's two properties here today. You can see there's existing homes here. And you see, they'd like to annex those two parcels into city limits shown in blue. They'd like to annex into city limits four new office warehouse buildings. And this area is identified as a primary expansion area in framework. Here are staff comments on the annexation petition. Moving into the rezoning, if annexed, they'd enter city limits as SFR1. From there, they'd like to rezone to GC. So here again is those properties. You can see those existing single-family homes. They are in the PJ today. You can see they do touch General Commercial to the north as well as residential districts on the other sides of the property. They'd like to do this rezoning to allow for that office warehouse, contractor's warehouse use. And you can see those properties today, those existing homes shown here. This is looking up the road on 34th, I believe this Avenue East into the neighborhood. And then this is on Hargrove Road, just showing you kind of the surrounding area. This is the site plan you saw in January. And here's that revised site plan. You can see they kind of moved those buildings onto the outside of the lot as well as they submitted a new landscaping plan for this development. You can see, here's the project overview. There's more in the packet, but just brief overview here. We do have some materials, brick veneer, metal board, signage, just kind of just the overall use. And you can see that rendering here just for kind of what this could look like if developed and zooming in on those individual office warehouses. Here's a sample of the materials being proposed. And here is kind of the surrounding uses that the petitioner submitted with the petition. Getting into framework here, this area was identified as suburban residential. So the zoning request and the use do not conform with framework. You can see those identified as suburban residential here. Moving into the permitted uses in general commercial, you can see those highlighted and just moving through the potential uses here. Lastly, they do have those two lots they'd like to subdivide and create one lot. You can see those existing buildings and just moving that middle lot line that runs between them to consolidate that lot. You can see here without contours. They do have a variance request for sidewalk construction. We did not receive any public comment. Do you have any questions for staff?
Engineering on the variance request for sidewalk?
We'd be okay with a variance request on this.
Is it within one-half mile of the, of Bowers Park? If it is, I don't.
Of Bowers Park?
No. I was.
Is it not that?
Isn't it?
Pretty close. Petitioner.
Good evening, Tom Samms with Longleaf Engineering. This is a project you guys saw six or seven months ago, and since that time, we've met with the property owner multiple times to try to figure out what he felt like his best path forward is. It is currently in the county. One thing that he felt was advantageous to him, and also the city is to be in the city limits and to, and to provide the, the development, you know, in accordance with city regulations, which is the reason that we provided the landscape plan and some more details that we didn't have last time when we were just asking for zoning. That seemed to be a, a big area of concern, we talked about it last time. Again, this is, this is something that hasn't changed conceptually from what he wants to do, from the, the sort of the office warehouse type configuration. But I do believe it would be a much more attractive and aesthetic development, meeting the, the city regulations for what you see here. We also provided the surrounding land uses, I just wanted to point out that there, it is there. So, so the things you see in the, the sort of yellowish or light yellow is the residential that's along Hargrove there, that is Hargrove running parallel to the interstate there, just south of the interstate. And the pink areas are, are commercial, and the, the orange areas are multifamily. So this, this encapsulates a little bit more of the actual use there, because several of these parcels are in the county and not necessarily zoned in the city. So we have a breakdown there. There's about fifty percent of the, the properties that front Hargrove along this section here from basically Skyline up to the interstate, about fifty percent, single-family. The rest are multifamily or commercial. There's a couple undeveloped parcels too. So it's not completely out of character for the area, particularly on this Hargrove. But the owner also would, would like to speak briefly about the, the plans that he has, and he also reached out to. I know we had some neighboring concerns last time, and he's had some discussions there too that I'm sure he can share with you. Do you have any questions before I say end talk?
Bring back up the site plan again. So the property to the south, that's not part of this project, right?
No, sir.
And that's, is that parcel in the county still?
It is in the county, I believe it's residential, single-family residential in the county.
Well, that's the neighborhood behind it, it's all single-family residential.
Yes, sir. They're in the city.
So you're just bringing in the, the top half of it, right? Or you're bringing in everything?
He, he only owns these, the two parcels to the north.
The hash?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and if it stayed in the county, could it support a septic type system?
It can, and, and he has, we have developed an alternate plan for the development for him to stay in the county. He'll, he'll lose a little bit of density there, but he also won't have, you know, some of the city requirements we have for screening and landscaping, sort of a trade-off there.
We, we don't call them requirements, we call them protections.
Of course.
Because any piece of property like this in the county, you do almost anything with it. That's one thing we always try to remind people that, in an area like, anybody's got neighborhoods that are in the county, it's to their protection to get in the city, so it does offer that.
I know one question we ask a lot of times is, did you try to meet with the neighbors in Broadview and get any opinion from any of those?
Yes, sir, and I was gonna let, the property owner is gonna speak on that. He, he has reached out a couple of times since that last meeting.
And I think last time you came before, so some questions about hours of operations to where it wouldn't affect the neighborhoods. It's, it, this is, seems like it's gated?
Wasn't gated, but, but the intent here is, is definitely to limit the hours of operation. This would not be a all-hour facility at, at all.
How do you, how do you govern that?
Well, I, you know, thi- this thing will be sort of part of a commercial AHOA effectively, because they will have shared buildings and landscaping and that sort of thing. And I think it's easily governed within those regulations.
Legally, we can put in the HIO regs that we can, no working past seven P M?
Mr. Garner, I think another question we had last time was, Hargrove Road's busy, and getting in and out of this. It's not in a turn, but it's almost in the turn, right before you get to the red light going back to Woodland Hills. And what do you think about the traffic? Do we need to look at turn lane or anything like that?
So I don't think they know yet what the, what businesses will go there. So I could ask for a chip, a trip generation summary with their request for approval of plans to determine whether or not a left turn lane is needed.
I just don't, like everywhere between seven and eight-thirty and three-thirty and five-thirty, it's really busy, it's busy all day, it's really busy early and late. I just want to be sure, whatever we do, we do it safe.
Yeah, that, that would be a condition of getting their land development permit approval, that they would have to fulfill whatever that traffic analysis, you know, brought to bear.
So has a traffic study already been conducted?
Not yet, ma'am. This was what we considered the first step in the process, but we, you know, we do that analysis in conjunction with engineering during the LDP process.
Wouldn't you know more about what businesses?
Hopefully, yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for this part of the petitioner's presentation? Thank you, Tom. Said your developer wants to have a word?
Yes, please.
Hi, Clay Smith, that's one-one-two-seven-one, Dually Circle in Northport. I think one of the major differences that we tried to put together this time versus the last time is more of a complete picture of what we were trying to accomplish. The last time, we more or less just had plot plan, and it seemed a little ill-prepared on our part. So trying to explain better of what we envisioned there, narrative explains that. What we, one of the areas with this type of complex, the amount of traffic should be held at a minimum. This is not going to be a coffee shop where you have track constant people in and out all day. Those, majority of these units are going to be, come in, gather up a few things, and go out to a job site, landscaping crew, small plumber, one-man plumber, that type of businesses.
How do you dictate that?
I'm sorry?
How do you dictate that?
Uh, so we're gonna keep it as a commercial lease, and we'll, we'll own the property. So we'll have final say over every tenant. As far as hours operation, that's something that we can put in the lease and everything.
I, I appreciate, I know that when you were here last week, asked a lot of questions about materials and landscaping, and I think at that point, you weren't, you weren't asking to come into the city and be obligated by that, but they, they're, this is significant.
Yes.
And I appreciate you talking to the neighbors.
Yeah, and I understand the impact of the neighborhood there, but the kind of plot plan that we put together with all the unzoned areas, I mean, you have the majority of the houses there are either unzoned, where you have commercial-type properties going on already. My God, I'm seating and cooling is one of those, it's, they're unzoned, there's no regulation to it. And he also owns the properties across the street there, so it's residential, but it's also, you know, and then there's some more to the right, pretty much every, a, a vast majority of everything along the Hargrove Road corridor is either unzoned or there's very few owner occupied, I guess. So I know Broadview, they'll have that entrance, that's why we tried to separate it out into three different buildings to kind of help their view of make it a little bit more cyclically with landscaping and everything as well.
What are the salanted lines that are within the building? I'm just curious, not that it makes a difference what they are.
Staff circle, what is, what, Ms. Princess, inside the building, there's these little, almost like parallel parking?
I think that's, uh...
You mean these lines right here?
Or angle parking, not parallel?
I'm not sure. I think it's just kind of a detail, that's nothing that signifies anything specific based off of what the engineers think.
It's probably, it's probably just a little hatch.
Bill, this drawing is significantly different than the one we saw last time. I mean, this one is showing very heavy plantings on the perimeter of this building. This, this building is showing, I mean, this drawing is showing that they are going to extraordinary cost and effort to buffer this building from the, from the neighbors. And, and of course, we've talked about, they could, you know, I voted against, I was against this last time, because basically, my grandmother stood up here and, and acted like we were going to destroy her life, you know, in this neighborhood. She was just, you know, it was just a, just a sweet neighborhood with, you know, and it looked, and, you know, you can imagine a lot of trucks going in and out of here. You can, you can imagine their lives just changing dramatically, you know, so, but, but given, I mean, this is, this is a material difference than that drawing. You, you've made a, now, are you, are you dedicating yourself to actually plant these things? Plant it like this?
I mean, I'm overseeing, I'm not going out there with a shovel.
I'm saying, are you, are you drawing it or are you gonna do it?
Well, that's, if it's in the city, that's what the regulation calls for.
Well, I mean, you gotta, you gotta count and plant on this southern line here, I mean, that's a lot of plantings you're, you're showing. It's a material buffer, I mean, it's, if you're gonna show it, you need to be willing to do it, I mean, it's buffer.
And that's, I think that's meeting the, this current city code with the landscaping buffer. There's also that, the masonry wall or the dividing wall that is on the left side and the bottom side. It's kind of hard to see with everything going on there, but that'll also be, you know, a significant cost for us to be into the city.
That's just on the southern side and the eastern side, or maybe the northern side would.
Yes.
Just be northern, that would be.
Sure.
Western.
They cut off the compass on the drawings, I'm not sure.
We got some people that signed up to speak, and we might be calling you back up, so if there's any more questions for petitioner, let's, let's hear from those who are here to speak, and then we might bring you back up.
Okay.
Good with that?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we have Carolyn Booth.
I'm the grandmother.
Ms. Booth, I knew that was coming, I knew that was coming.
I'm a great grandmother now, so.
Mr. Robb is over you.
Name and address for the record.
My name is Carolyn Emerson Booth. I live at thirty-seven oh nine Thirty-Fourth Avenue East. If you come down Hargrove Road and you come to what used to be Broadview Subdivision, my house sits catty corner to Hargrove Road and Broadview. Thirty-Fourth Avenue East. And I'm still opposing this rezoning, as are all my neighbors. My neighborhood is made up of both black families and white families. We're just one big community that loves each other and loves our neighborhood. Now, if you go back to that drawing they showed before, they showed the gray, the purple.
The zoning map?
No, I want the one that shows what's in the city and what's, uh,
Zoning map.
Communities. Yes, that one. All that purple back there in the back, that's land that joins that to McFar, I mean, Skyline Boulevard. And land behind there, that's not, the lot, it's not even developed. But across from our subdivision is a church and a car wash. And that car wash is not used very much as a car wash. It's mostly a congregating place. Late at night, you might hear loud music, cars congregating down there. It's just a big problem. But anyway, when we met last time, the commission voted against it, and they even told the Longleaf or whatever they are that there was no use in going back and working on their drawings, that it would not be approved. So I was pretty shocked when I got the letter about a week and a half ago, stating we were having this meeting again. I didn't bother trying to get a petition again, because I've already done that. But I want to share with you some of the things that happened since then. I was contacted by Mr. Smith, and he asked to meet with me to try to convince me to go along with this proposal. And I told Mr. Smith, there's no use, no way could I approve for that property, because my house is right across the road from it, on the Broadview Road. And I told him, if he wanted to meet, that he really needed to meet with the whole community, but that never happened. By the time Mr. Smith and I talked, he told me, and I didn't know whether to take this as a threat or just how to take it, or, anyway, he told me that if we did not approve, if this was not approved for them to put in the city, that he had already invested a lot of money in buying this property. And if it didn't go in the city, it was gonna cost him a lot more money. And therefore, if it didn't go in the city, he wasn't gonna be able to make it as nice as he would if we would approve it going to city. I didn't know if that was a bribe or a threat, but it rubbed me the wrong way. I didn't like it at all. You know how grandmothers are, they don't like things like that. But anyway, at the time we had our conversation, I told him, I said, you being a businessman like you are, it seems like before you invested all that money in that property, that you would have checked first to see if it was gonna be rezoned to the city, in the city. And he told me, I did talk to someone in the city, and I was pretty much assured that it would be rezoned. And after we completed our conversation later on, I got to reliving all my notes of our conversation. And I thought, I wonder who in the city he talked to that had that kind of power that they could make such a statement to him. So I got on the phone and started trying to call Mr. Smith back. I made numerous calls. My calls never were answered, and finally, I left a voice message. And I told him I'd like to know who it was in the city that had that kind of power that could convince him to go ahead and, and buy all that property and that it would be rezoned, but he never replied to me. I'm just real disappointed I haven't come back up here again, because I, this makes me very nervous, having to talk to y'all. But hey, I'd come up here and talk every day if it convinced you, because that's my neighborhood. I love my neighborhood. I've been living there for fifty-seven years. We were some of the first ones to purchase lots when they were creating that Broadview subdivision. We purchased two of the lots, love our neighborhood, don't want to move. I'm too old to move, I'm eighty-one years old, almost eighty-two, so I don't want to move. I love my neighborhood. But I don't want it ruined by having this warehouse across the road from me. And I'm just begging y'all, please do not consider that. I don't think it's good. As we said before, that traffic on Hargrove Road is just unreal. Sometimes we have a hard time getting out of Broadview. And school buses go up and down that road, people use it as a cut-through instead of going on down to Skyline. And then, I mean, down to McFarland, and then on Skyline, they just cut through Hargrove Road. Lot quicker, lot less traffic, get through there quicker. So it's just a mess on the road. And at the time, you know, we bought there, there wasn't even an interstate over there, that's how. And at the time, you know, we bought there, there wasn't even an interstate over there, that's how long I've been there.
Ma'am.
Like I said, we love our...
Excuse me, ma'am. We, uh, we ran out of time, so if, if you wanted to give more time, you're gonna have to vote to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Just a little bit, little bit more, not much longer, Ms. Booth.
I can go on?
Just a few more, a few more seconds.
Okay, well, uh, let's see, where was I? Oh, because you're proposing that now doesn't mean it'll remain that once it gets in the city. You know, a warehouse can be used for a lot of things and some of the things that, if you read what all could be in a business area like that, it's, somehow it's not very stuff that we would like to be in our community for sure. You know, it could end up alcohol, it could end up drugs, it could end up, uh, all kind of things. And because today, or tomorrow, or next year, it's gonna remain the warehouse, an office warehouse doesn't mean ten years from now it'll be an office warehouse that's used for other things.
So, you are aware that if we voted against this, it would appear like we were voting with you. But we could be dealing you quite a blow because, because you could, you know, we, he could go out there and park a bunch of junk cars out there and the city's gonna have a hard time exercising their, their rights. I mean, that, he could, he could try to make your life miserable, he could do, he could put some mobile homes...
He could do all kinds of things, exactly.
But you know that's possible.
I know that's possible, and that's one reason I'm up here talking right now, is because I don't want that to happen. I don't want our area to be ruined.
Well, I'm saying, I'm saying it could be worse than this, this very well, in other words...
Oh, yeah. I understand that.
And, and Ms. Booth, that can happen tomorrow.
Beg pardon?
And that could, if we voted down, that can happen, what you just, all those things you named that you were afraid of, ten years? That could happen tomorrow if we voted it down.
Yeah, exactly.
So, that's, that's something...
I mean, I'm just, I'm just totally against it, I just hate for our neighborhood to be ruined. And I hate for more traffic to be on Harrow Grove Road even though that's uncontrollable. And, uh, I don't know what else to say except I hope y'all won't approve it. Last time you disapproved it, in fact, you even told him, he said he'd go back and do the drawings. And he was even told, "No use doing that because we're not gonna prove it." And that's why I was so shocked when I got this letter. So...
Thank you, ma'am.
I'll sit down. Thank you.
You did great.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have Isaiah Harper.
Good afternoon, afternoon, Board, my name is Isaiah Harper. Uh, I live in the fourth house up into the community from Ms. Booth. Um, Ms. Booth is right...
What's that address for the record, please?
I'm sorry, thirty-seven forty-three Thirty-Fourth Avenue East. Uh, Ms. Booth is right, last time we were here, uh, the consensus of this board was that this, this, uh, petition does not fit the future use of the plan for this area that the city has had. And that's what the board told the petitioner. And that was the reason that the board denied it. Uh, to my recollection, I look back at the records. And I'm asking this board to stick with what this, uh, last board said. Uh, when you look at that map that she pulled up right there across from the subdivision, that commercial, uh, that they're talking about across from there is a church, it's a community church. The pastor of that church lives within the Broadview Subdivision across the street. Sometimes he walks down to the church. Uh, so, it is very much, uh, a, you know, a, a neighborhood that, uh, is together. Uh, one of the other things I want you to consider is that this is, uh, a, a bus stop, it's right outside of where this building is proposed. Uh, the stop sign at the bottom there of Harrow Grove Road where you leave our subdivision, that's a bus stop where kids stand uh, and catch the bus. Also, buses come, uh, turn constantly into our community, come up and go around the one-way circle and then come out. So, uh, there's a lot of traffic there in the morning. Um, and I know you, as you were asking Ms. Booth just a second ago, um, you know, that he can come and park a bunch of cars there if you don't approve and then turn it into a junkyard, well, he's not gonna do that because he's invested too much money, right? So, he's gonna try, if he, if you not approve it, he's going to try and sell it, sell it off to somebody that's gonna do something more reasonable if you guys do not approve it. That's a gamble, but that's the gamble I think as, uh, most people in the community is willing to take. Um, so, I'm gonna ask you guys to stick by what the last, uh, board did. Uh, keep in mind also that he's essentially just taking two houses that front the community and wants to drop a warehouse right there in their place. And it's essentially defacing our community if you let him do it. That's what's going to happen.
I don't think this board ever made a statement about why we voted against it. We made, we never made a formal statement comprehensively because everybody on this board has a different reason for voting, whatever they vote. So, that, that, just don't, just don't say that we're going against the prior board. That board is sitting right here in front of you, okay?
Well, there are some new members, but I'm telling you what the feel and the consensus that appeared to be...
You don't have to tell me, I was here.
Yeah, I, I understand, but you would agree, you would agree...
We didn't talk about whether...
You would agree the consensus of the board was...
I just don't want you putting words in our mouth. We did not comprehensively as a board say this building did not fit into the...
No, I didn't call anybody by name, I just said the consensus of the board and the feel of the board seemed to be, for the most part, that this was not in line with the future use plan of the city. If you look at the future city use plan for this particular area, that's what the board talked about. Uh, I didn't call any particular names. Um, the petitioner, I live four doors up from Ms. Booth, he has never come to talk to me. I don't even know his name, okay? So, he's, Ms. Booth is the only one that he's apparently talked to in the community about this, uh, particular project. Um, and, and, and finally, you know, I, I live by something that my parents taught me, is that, uh, your first impression ought to be your best impression. And so, when this petitioner came before this board and brought you guys drawings and all the, all those things, they didn't have the trees, they didn't tell the board what type of material they were gonna use. That showed they didn't care about the community that they were going to enjoy with their commercial project. They had nothing, they could tell, they didn't tell you the material? I think somebody asked, "What was, what type of material are you gonna use to front this project?" They couldn't tell you. So, that was their first impression. They don't really care, they're just bringing you something new to try again. And, and that's what you ought to consider. From the last time to this time, uh, they have shown that they don't care about the community. They only want to get this building up, uh, because they've invested a lot of money in it. And I think, Mr. Ramsey, I will call your name now, you did ask him, is he dedicating himself to putting those trees there and those buffers there that I heard a second ago? Again, your first impression should be your best impression. He didn't care the last time because he'd even present a map showing any kind of buffer zone. Uh, and that's on the record. I'm asking you to consider, uh, what the previous board, I know some of you guys are new, and, um, consider what they thought about it before you make a decision, okay? Thank you.
So, Mr. Harper, let me ask you this question. So, knowing that he made improvements from the last time, regardless of, you know, first impression, uh, if, uh, are you willing to take a risk or a gamble that, that anything else could be put there to your disliking? You know, is that, is that any, does that have any bearing on...
Yes, I agree with Ms. Booth that, you know, we're willing to take that risk because we, we don't believe that he's gonna take this property that he spent thousands, probably hundreds of thousands of dollars on, because I know one of those properties was for sale for three hundred and thirty-seven thousand not too long ago before he purchased it. He's not gonna take and put junk on that property.
No, but he could build a warehouse...
He could build, yes.
Well, that, well, you know, I think we crossed that bridge when we get to it. I, I'm just willing not to take the chance right now of him building anything on there. If he goes and he builds something, he builds something ugly, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it.
I, I think, I'm just saying that, just...
I understand.
Because I'm concerned, I, I would be concerned about that for you and Ms. Booth. But, like I said, that's why I wanted to ask the question, just make sure, because that could, that could happen. You know, he could sell it regardless of how much he sells it for, somebody could put something that's totally wor, far worse than what we're proposing tonight. I just wanted to see if that, what kind of risk that is.
Yeah, but I think, I think most people are willing to take that chance.
Okay.
And we're asking you guys to consider our feeling and not deface our community right now with it. And let's see what he does with it if you don't.
Right, thank you.
Hold on just a second, question. Could, if he, if he met with y'all in the community, is there any way that y'all could, you think he could work something out? And I ask that because we run across this, we run across this all the time. If this is in the city, then we can make him put the trees up, put indirect lighting, do certain things. If it's not in the city, we don't have much power to tell him, "No, you can't do that or you can't do this." So, if it's in the city, we can kind of control it to some extent. If it's not, he could come in there and build a warehouse and it could look like a warehouse.
Yes, and I think what the last board did was approve the annexation recommendation, but they denied the zoning. And that's what we're asking you to do this time.
And the shortage to the PJ, did we rezonate last time?
Did they annex it last time? Anexed.
Yeah, y'all typically approve annexations, but if you didn't like the rezoning, you typically recommend denial.
Let me, uh, let me make a statement, I know this is beginning to become an issue of whether or not it's appropriate to annex or not. You know, there's, there is a city sewer system in Thirty-Fourth Avenue East. My department's not gonna approve a development on this piece of property, uh, with an on-site sewage disposal system when the sewer is readily available. I mean, it's just not good for public, public health. Um, so, any, any development that has to come to my office for approval would be required to connect a sanitary sewer.
It has to be annexed.
Has to be annexed to do it.
That's right, okay. All right, thank you, sir. Uh, petitioner, if you care to come and address any of the comments or objections you heard from those in opposition?
Yes, uh, I just wanted to make sure that it's clear that whenever I started looking at purchasing the property, we did speak with a few of, uh, city engineers and whatnot and through, I purchased the property from a realtor. And it was not a guarantee of approval to be, for what we were trying to build. It was, it's in the county, it's on zone land in the county. And it's open to that to be able to build what you build. There was no guarantee of, hey, yeah. So, I just wanted to make that clear. And, uh, I did reach out to Ms. Hagler that's directly behind on that four-acre parcel that's also in zones. And I think she is the one person that's been living in this property longer than Ms. Poole. Um, she actually grew up in the house that's, the front of it that's on a, I think, three-three-two-seven Harrow Grove. And before Broadview was there, it was Cotton Fields. So, I'm sure at that time, they would have looked for it to stay Cotton Fields and not have the neighborhood built. But the, everything changes over time. Um, as far as the addition of the landscaping, the materials, uh, that is in the city code book. So, we just kind of assumed on our end that if it was approved, that we would be met with those requirements and that was all understood. I know, um, we probably take that for granted for the general public, don't understand that. But that's one of the reasons why we didn't have that shown on the block plan because if it's approved, then we have to follow the city guidelines, that's part of it. And, uh, we do have a plan in place if it's not approved and it's not to sell, it's to...
Say that again.
We do have a plan, uh, if it's not approved and it's not to sell, it's to build something that we can build in the county.
Did you talk to anybody besides Ms. Hagler?
Did you hear what the engineer just said?
I did.
I mean, that's problematic for you.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, can you repeat that? If it's not approved, what? This is a... Okay.
And that's based on the county perk testing and everything, I mean...
I think she's asked me to repeat what you said, that if it's not approved, you have a plan to build something.
Yeah.
My, my question was, you heard what the engineer said.
Well, Mike said anything that comes to his office, he want, but, but if it doesn't come to your office, it doesn't come to your office, right?
My office to break ground on any development there. Can't, you can't, you can't circumvent that.
Okay, that's, that's if it's... That's regardless of if, if it's annexed in or not?
Regardless, yes, anything in the planning jurisdiction has to come from my office for development approval.
And also, Zach, or, or maybe you mentioned it, or the Longley engineer, if you stay in the county, your density has to be decreased, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you talk to any other, any other residents besides Ms. Hagler? Is she the only one you talked to, Ms. Hagler and Ms. Booth?
Yes, ma'am, the two that directly touch it, yes.
Any other questions for a petitioner? Thank you, sir. All right, Commissioner, we've heard from the petitioner and those in opposition, we've heard this before. So, we have three cases to discuss or start voting on. So, if there's any comments you'd like to make, please feel free to do that.
So, this is gonna be similar to the one before, if, if... Am I a little, okay, sorry. Okay, hypothetically, if I vote no on the rezoning, I could still vote yes on the subdivision and then it would just, if it, if the council votes to rezone it, it just...
Correct.
Falls into place.
Yes, so for this one, if the annexation was recommended to be approved, that could go to council and be annexed in, in, as SFR one. Um, if the zoning is approved, then when they annex in as SFR one, they would then go to council to annex in as GC, or to rezone to GC. And then the subdivision stays with you guys, um, y'all have the final say on that. And it's just to remove that middle lot line. So, these two lots would then become one lot, but still be in the county if others failed.
And can, can you go back to the verbiage about whether it conforms to the comprehensive plan? Okay. All right, thank you.
Man, this is, this is a tough one just because of the, like we've said several times, and we're gonna say it again tonight, this, this county property and what could be done around it could be anything. However, we've just heard from engineering that he's not gonna approve anything, uh, that he has to sign off on. That kind of changes the equation a little bit, but...
Is it anything at all, or are you talking about only things that would need sewer?
Land disturbance permit, he wouldn't approve a land disturbance permit.
So, basically, it covers any form of development, um, that, you know, he needs a land development permit from my office to, to do anything, including a connection to Harrow Grove Road or Thirty-Fourth Avenue East, uh, would require a driveway permit.
I see.
So, so that, that really throws our theory that anything could be built there.
Pretty much.
Out, out the window, right?
It depends on how angry the city engineer gets. No to sell.
And you, you're saying that you would not approve it, for what reason?
So, ma'am, I think that my charge in, as part of this position is, you know, obviously protecting public health, safety and welfare, that's, um, also as a licensed engineer, we're charged with that. On-site sewage disposal systems were intended for a temporary purpose until municipal sewer reaches the development. Well, municipal sewer is already there. There's no need to risk a failing on-site sewage disposal system when sewer's in the street next to the development.
But a used car lot would not require a sewer system?
So, if he has a development that doesn't require a, a connecting to sewer, that might be something that I'm, I'm, I would have to approve, but I don't know what that would be.
I'd say he has to have bathrooms.
Yeah.
That's probably unlikely, that, that would be any development.
Yeah, pretty, pretty narrow list.
Right.
Right.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right, that's, having heard none, it was last chance, so here we go, guys. Commission before us, we have annexation request, A N fourteen twenty-five, requesting two-point-three acres located at thirty-three-eleven and thirty-three-twenty-seven Hargrove Road, be annexed into the city of Tuscaloosa. A motion and a second.
Motion.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Rumsey.
Yeah, no.
This is an annexation, ma'am. You're gonna vote no on the annexation.
Oh, well, I mean, he's not gonna, they're not gonna annex, yeah, yes on the annexation.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Welcome to the city, maybe. All right, now we have Z, twenty-twenty-five Longleaf Engineering, petition to rezone a two-point-three acres at thirty-three-eleven, thirty-three-twenty-seven Hargrove Road from SFR one, which it came into the city, asked by the annexation to G C. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Ms. Hornsby.
No.
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 No. Commission, before us, S sixty-nine twenty-five, thanks for removing so quickly from me. We have, uh, Bobby Haggers, subdivision of my flat land, consisting of one lot at two-point-three acres, previous mention addressed with one variance request, civil construction engineering has no issues with. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Rumsey.
Uh, no.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Hornsby.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes. What's the bottom, what was the count on that?
Three, six, two, approved.
How many no's we have?
Three.
Five yeses.
Five yeses, so the three, not approved, okay. Or not without a recommendation, well, not approved. That's right. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, commission, we have another companion case. That is River Bluff subdivision. This is an annexation and a subdivision request of forty-point-eight acres. It's just south of thirty-six eighty-five River Bluff Drive. Um, and then with that annexation, doing a thirty-one lot subdivision, um, at this property. This is, uh, Council District Three. Um, you can see here, we're just north of the Black Warrior River, kind of right off of McRice Ferry. Um, you can see that parcel today is undeveloped, is currently vacant. You can see that is the piece they would like to annex into city limits, shown in blue. Um, they'd like to annex, um, to get on city infrastructure, um, and this parcel is identified as a primary expansion area, and here are department requ, um, excuse me, department comments on the annexation petition. Um, and just looking at it briefly, this is that proposed thirty-one lot subdivision that we'll look at more closely, um, as we move into the subdivision request. Again, thirty-one lots, so it'll be thirty, um, single-family residential lots, one open space. So again, that parcel is vacant today. We're just south of Acadian Place to the north. Can see those thirty-one lots here, that one open space against the Black Warrior River, um, the rest, um, to be single-family, uh, dwelling lots. And you see that without contours here. And now just zooming in, you see those thirty-one lots, um, starting at the east. Uh, you can see about eighty-five foot width, um, smaller lots to the north, the larger lots as you move south towards the river. Um, and on the western side, you can see that kind of same pattern kept with those larger lots, um, south towards the river. We do have a ver, variance request for stub streets. We did receive one public comment. Do you have any questions for staff?
Engineering on the stub street.
We're in favor of this request.
Just wanted to get it on the record. Uh, before we get in that, can we pull up the neighborhoods to the north? There, any better visual of maybe the lot sizes of those in, in comparison to what is proposed here?
Let's see. I don't know if we have a greater one, but Mr. Pons just drew on there. It looks like there's one lot, um, to the north.
That looks more of a state type than the other ones, is that what I'm seeing?
I think this one probably shows it best. You've got, you know, this is the lot line here.
Yeah.
And then you got some separation here.
That's just adjoining lot to this development.
Oh, you're talking about the overall.
I'm talking about the overall.
We can pull something up on...
Pull, pull something up at some point. We'll, we'll, if you don't mind. Petitioner.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Barkalter here, representing the developers for River Bluff subdivision. Um, I think we've addressed everything that was questioned by the staff, and, uh, if there's any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Um, got a lot of questions.
Okay.
Let me ask this. Have you met with the neighbors?
No, we have not.
Okay.
We will be willing to, I mean.
You were willing to?
Yes, sir.
All right, I know. Um, a couple of thoughts come to mind. This is, you know, we, we see a lot of neighborhoods in existence, been there for a while, well-respected, well-kept, proud of their neighborhoods, right?
Yes, sir.
And we get this adjoining property, and a lot of times we talk about, you know, what type of developments are gonna be. Is it, and they're, they're gonna wanna know, how's it gonna affect their property values?
Oh, I understand completely.
Get that?
Yes, sir.
So my, kind of my questions are a couple. One being, like, I'm seeing the lots up here on the, the right-hand side of the, of the drawing here. I mentioned it earlier, when we did the towns, we had a development there, and we had similar situation, we had four or five lots by one property owner. And the concern I really had was, that property owner to the north there, he's now gonna potentially have five neighbors.
That's correct.
And you're gonna have potentially five different backyards looking into yours, okay? And we talked a lot about development previously about buffer. I don't know what the buffer plans are. I'd like to hear your comments on the buffer plan. Thinking about these people that are gonna be right up against this. So talk about the buffer plan.
Well, we don't, we don't really have a buffer plan. Uh, you know, the subdivision request, like, regulations require us to do the thirty-five-foot setback in the backyard. So there's already basically a buffer back there.
The building, you mean from the building, the back of the, of the building?
Well, yeah, on the back of the lots. So, I mean, if, if you wanna call out a buffer, I guess you could.
Well, and like, again, if I'm that guy out there, and I, am I gonna have a chain-link fence, a dog ear fence? You know what I'm saying? I mean, that's what gives me heartburn, is that if I'm living there, I wanna see some consistency on, on that entire property line.
Okay.
And I want a buffer that's respectable, not just haphazard. Uh, that, that would be what we did with the, the development in the towns, and we finally got to a good place. So I think that's something that we need to have a plan for. Don't just say we're gonna do something.
Oh, I understand. We totally respect the existing subdivision. We're not trying to do anything to impact the existing subdivision. We wanna be part of that development. I mean, we'll be willing to work with the homeowners association, you know, whatever. Uh, so we don't have objections to doing a buffer. A fence, you know, if that's what they would like to have, we don't have a problem with that at all.
Let's talk about the homeowners association. Are you proposing or thinking about wanting to ask to join their homeowners association, or are you gonna form your own?
Well, I would think, normally, we would form our own, but if they would, you know, if they would be willing to work with us, we, we could become part of the homeowners association.
See, I would think with this being such a...
Yeah.
Adjoning neighborhood.
Correct.
Having one's homeowner standard and rules and regulations, that, that, that might give these folks peace of mind.
Yes, and, you know, well, I've looked at restrictive covenants, so, you know, there's no issue if, if, you know, we can use the same restrictive covenants. Like I said, we wanna be part of this development. We don't wanna do something that's gonna degrade their subdivision at all.
Well, you know, you heard us say this a couple of times, and our biggest fear is this is in the county.
Yes.
We want the city.
What?
That gives these guys protections. Um, 'cause I, you know, I always worry about, let's try to get to an amicable place, 'cause I fear that if we don't get there, and you go, you get the die across the board, then you're not gonna come back before us again, and you can do anything you want to there. That would not be good. Same thing for any future developments. I, my goal, hope, is to get us to a happy place with these folks that are about to come up here and pull our ears a little bit.
Oh, yeah, that's fine, and we, we would be willing to work with them in any way.
Well, but you did meet with the neighbors. I heard lots of moans and groans.
Oh, no, we haven't. We didn't know there was an issue.
Okay, well, that's, all right, guys, we'll, we'll, we'll handle it. Anyway, I just, you know, we, again, Mr., I think we've heard someone say tonight, Mr. Puma said this, we always encourage these groups to get together and talk before they get here, because at that point, it's kind of hard to get to a good place where everybody wins. So I hate we didn't do that. I don't know if we can get there now, or if we can think about doing something later and y'all get together, but those are, I can guarantee you, we're gonna, the things I said are, we're gonna hear from here in a few minutes, so. Those are my questions. Anybody else have questions for petitioner?
No question, but my main concern was exactly what you brought up about those five lots and, uh, the home to the north of them. Um, that's a concern for me, and I also, um, I just feel like it would have been a show of good faith if you would have at least, at least tried to reach out to some of the surrounding community members.
Okay.
That's important.
Any other?
I have a question. Um, the leftover property that Dominion still owns, that, I don't know, if it's around fifteen acres. What, I mean, I know they're not, sorry, I know there're not gonna be any stub streets, so what, what public access does that property have? Is it just gonna be holding the world together, and that's all it's gonna do, or what?
Which property were you referring to, Ms. Prince?
This.
It's below. I don't know where we're looking. Okay, it's south, south.
So the south end of this property adjoins the river. Goes all the way to the river.
But he's killing off the lots well before the river.
Yeah, there's a large open space area that they're dedicating. Basically, it's unusable or undevelopable, or, or a, a challenge. It's gonna be affected by the floodway and just some extremely steep topography. So they're avoiding doing anything with this, the plan that they're presenting.
And is that designated, I, I'm sorry, I just can't see this writing is so little. Is that designated as one of the lots within the subdivision?
No, it's designated as open space. It'll be a non-buildable...
But it's platted, that's what I...
Yeah, it'd be platted as a non-buildable lot.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Any other questions?
So are we gonna ask them to meet with the neighbors first and bring it back, or what?
I think we need to hear, let, I mean, everybody's here, they signed up, they made the effort to get out here tonight, we need to hear from them.
Okay.
And then that, if you, it'd be good for you to hear from them, and you can decide at that point, are we in a place where we can get, ask for a voter? You wanna talk to these guys a little deeper and have a understanding. But anyway.
Okay.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Thanks, sir. I'm sure we'll be calling you back. So who do we have signed up to speak?
All right, Mr. Chairman, we have the HOA board representative, I think it's Adam, is that correct?
Hello.
Name and address.
Thank you, guys. My name's Doug Simpson. I currently represent the HOA of Acadian Place as the president of, of Acadian Place. It's our privilege to be able to talk to you tonight regarding the future plans and the development, as what you just saw. But before I get started, I would like to address two of the questions that you had. There has been no contact, and we would appreciate the contact, let me be clear with that, with all of you. Secondly, one of the biggest topics that we have is when you, someone mentioned, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear, but I couldn't, uh, understand the specific of the question, but someone talked or asked about the size of the lots. I'll get into that in detail, but if you look at the five lots to the northeast of the proposed development, those lots do not match the estate section, which is the access right that that current development is being planned to go through. So what we would ask in, in, and Adam will get to that in a second, is that that plan be redrawn to where it would meet, uh, the same lot size and house minimum that is required within the covenants.
Gosh, real quick, I asked earlier, can we get some lot sizes of the adjoining neighborhood, Acadian? Is it Acadian Place? And then there's another, what's the, is River Bluff the road, right?
It is, yes.
Is, is it part of Acadian HOA?
It, it is. If you'll go to the presentation I sent, I, I'll try to give you a display real quick of what that...
I mean, I want to be fair to them as well, if there's lot size, it's like Acadian's a little smaller, aren't they?
There is. There's three sec, se- sections of Acadian Place.
Right.
And the further north section, the one that is adjacent to, which will touch all of the square footage that is shown, drawn, is the estate section that has a square foot minimum.
Right.
Along with a lot size minimum.
Yeah, the, the smallest lot in that section is a half...
Can I, can I pause real quick? We need your name and address, as well as your name and address.
Sure. So I'm Adam Ingram. I'm at forty-three seventy-five Acadian Place.
Okay.
I'm on the board also.
Okay.
Can I ask, can I ask a question before you get back into it again? You're the board at HOA.
I am, yes, sir.
Would you entertain working with them to be part of your HOA?
Mr. Wright, we most certainly would. We have attempted multiple times through a third-party contact and through text messages to contact the developer as recent as this week, through, again, third-party, uh, representation, uh, that mutual friends, as I would call them, and we have yet to be contacted.
At least we got, he's kind of agreed to talk to you about HOA being one, and you're open to talking to him about it.
The HOA is...
Okay, great, thank you.
And I think I can speak to the neighborhood as well.
Please continue.
Yep. So, you know, again, first, let me say, we recognize the importance of growth of our city. We, we are very much a fan of the McRice Ferry Extension Project that has changed the landscape of Tuscaloosa forever, and we're a big fan of that. As you are aware, the proposed development is asking to access the property via River Bluff Drive, as shown north of the connection point. And as a resident who would be directly impacted by the proposed residential development, I want to raise concerns about how this project will affect the people who will call our neighborhood home moving forward if approved. Obviously, we're concerned regarding, uh, safety and regarding the traffic. Our streets during the morning hours especially are already at near capacity, adding approximately a hundred more vehicles, as you stated earlier, four, four vehicles per home, approximately a hundred and twenty more vehicles ingress, egress of, uh, two times today, or twice a day, looking at three-hundred-and-sixty ins and outs coming through that small section of the road, obviously is something that we are con, deeply concerned about. If this project is approved during the construction, we would see increased traffic due to heavy equipment, material deliveries, and a multitude of construction work vehicles. What we know from research, we, it shows that a neighborhood the size of what is being proposed, early construction phase would consist of approximately twenty to forty trips per day. During the active building phase, we could expect traffic to increase sixty to a hundred trips per day, while during the late construction phase, we would expect a volume of approximately thirty to sixty trips per day. And if you'll see the River Bluff Road, you'll see, although it's twenty-seven feet in, uh, width, it is one small entrance into the proposed development. Studies also show that an average household generates, to your point, nine to ten vehicle trips per day. For a neighborhood the size of the proposed development, the volume increase on that small road would vary from thirty to three-hundred-and-sixty trips per day. Our concern for pedestrian safety just as in exists for our neighborhood. If you'll please pull up the presentation that I attached.
So we do not have your presentation. I don't believe we...
Okay, it shows from Doug Simpson at Mercedes-Benz dot com. Okay.
Did you receive any, like, received?
I didn't. I didn't receive any of the messages.
Okay, yeah.
But maybe if you'll, if you'll go back to the slide that showed, um, Acadian Place.
Yeah, we'll pull that up.
Our concern for pedestrian safety isn't just for our neighborhood. Uh, our concerns also extends to the Mc, McRice Ferry Spur, as shown. Although we're super excited for the addition of the River Walk, unfortunately, our neighborhood, along with others, have zero safe access points to enjoy the new walk without placing ourselves and our children at risk to access the new walk. As intended, the new walk has connected all the neighborhoods of McRice Ferry Road from Lexington Downs, Brook Highland, North Ridge Circle, to Acadian Place. The five-hundred-plus residents are now part of a wonderful ecosystem of neighborhoods. However, Brook Highland, North Ridge Circle, Acadian Place, and other residents of the Spur currently do not have any safe passage to enjoy the new road. Neighborhood design, which is something that we're very concerned with, many of us moved to the neighborhood because of its quiet residential nature. Another development that extends directly off our estate section risks changing the character of our neighborhood forever, making it less livable for current families while not necessarily serving the long-term needs of the community. Again, if the, the developers ready, are willing to, to meet with the HOA board, we definitely accept that request. With that in mind, I'll turn it to Adam to discuss some of the technical reasons of our concerns.
Uh, yeah, just real briefly... Yeah, just real briefly, uh, so I'm a, uh, I'm a civil engineer and familiar with development and that kind of thing. And so, I have just really two specific concerns related to the traffic, really about the pedestrian and the potential for pedestrian conflicts. Uh, you know, thirty lots is not a, a lot, but on a neighborhood this size, it is significant. And a couple of things I want to call your attention to. One is, we don't have sidewalks in Acadian Place along either entrance or along River Bluff Drive. So consequently, all of our pedestrians, dog walkers, everybody is gonna be in the roadway. And then the other thing is that you can see the traffic circle there that River Bluff Drive comes off of. And as a matter of fact, the northeast corner of that is our playground for our neighborhood. So, kind of everybody has some concerns about the traffic circle and the number of cars that are gonna be going through there. And so, because of that, I've got two requests. One, we're in support of the no sub streets uh, waiver that they've asked for. And in fact, we would actually ask that they slide the cul-de-sac on the east side away from the property line so that the right-of-way doesn't touch the property line. And also, I wanted to ask if we could have the developer require to have a traffic study done so that we can see, uh, you know, maybe there's recommendations in the report, maybe not, but at least then we could see that it had been considered.
Thank you very much.
If I may, just real quick, please. Other requests that we would like to make on record is it, is we would request that the developer adhere to the state section of Acadian Place architectural design. We would also ask that uh, the developer adhere to the state section of Acadian Place lot size, which is currently uh, ten as shown or below our minimum. Ensure the new development utilizes green space. If you look at the development, there's very little, if no, green space that's consistent with recent developments. Currently, when you do a comparison of the towns of North River and High Grove, there's subsequent amount of green space which is not shown there. And that comes in play due to the fact that our concern is that we do have applicable uh, green space along with the playground, that if approved as is, we would have to, I'd say mitigate the use of our uh, playground and our green space with an existing neighborhood. We ask that the board members require, as you called it, a static buffer up to forty feet between the new development and the homes that touch these, currently these four properties. And then, as um, Adam discussed, uh, a traffic study to be done so we can understand the real impact related to Acadian Place. In addition to that, we would also ask that the uh, traffic mitigation, if approved during the construction times, that traffic mitigation during peak times uh, would occur. And I think Mr. Mr. Gardner during our HOA uh, has supported that request. But specific to uh, bus pickup and work leave times with additional volume of traffic that we would be planning to see during the construction phase, we would obviously be heavily impacted. Obviously, you see from the twenty-some-odd vehicles or, or homes that set and reside in the restate, estate section of the Acadian Place, there's only one ingress, egress point into the main two exit points of the neighborhood, and we believe that would be a major concern. Okay? Thank you for your time. Thank you for listening to the voices that I'm sure you will hear from a couple of other members of the neighborhood. And again, we appreciate your request to work with the neighborhood in an effort to solve this topic. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mr. Chairman, we have uh, J.D. York. Name and address for the record, please.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Name and address for the record.
My name is J.D. York. Uh, my address is three-six-nine-zero River Bluff Drive. Just for reference, uh, the lot you were all talking about with the five houses underneath it, that's me. Okay. Um, so I have a prepared statement that I'll just go through, but I would echo everything that our homeowners association said. I mean, my concerns marry up with theirs. But uh, yeah, a little over thirteen years ago, I retired from the U.S. Marine Corps and was called to come to Tuscaloosa to continue my service, this time as a teacher, by starting the junior ROTC program at Paul D. Bryant High School. That's where I remain employed today. Uh, after moving here, we had to rent a small home while we searched for a house large enough to accommodate our large family of nine, in addition to my ailing mother, whom we had become her caregiver before. We finally found our current home uh, that we've mentioned, and we were able to buy it and move in at the end of twenty thirteen. While purchasing a home's a major investment for all home buyers, ours was probably a bit more than most. Our home is the largest in the subdivision, and it sits on a two-acre lot, and it comprises the vast majority of my net worth. We've done improvements to the property through additions that enabled us to care for our homebound parents and enable them a better quality of life. Our latest tax assessment placed the value at over one point one million, whatever that's worth. And realtors told us privately that it could be worth substantially more. What has given the property its value, however, is not so much the size or, but it's the location. It's located at the very end of the subdivision, uh, at the end of River Bluff Drive, so it's very private. There's essentially no traffic. Our home is bordered in the back by thirty-six acres of woodland that stretches all the way to Lexington Downs. And to the left of the property that we are discussing, what was forty-plus acres of forest stretched all the way to Black Warrior River. Our only neighbor is to our right and, who also has a two-acre lot, which they have kept wooded, so the overall feel is that you're not even in a subdivision. It's very private, very secluded. It's a great place. The privacy, lack of traffic, and the green wooded field of property added significantly to the value of our home. The current plan as published would greatly diminish the value of our property. The extension of the road would increase traffic moving in front of our home, I say sixtyfold. I got no traffic now. Obviously, I'm gonna have a lot of traffic after that, uh, at a minimum, and it'll likely be more once all the homes are constructed. The green spaces as they currently exist around our property would undoubtedly be further altered and removed, and it continued to diminish the desirability of the location. Most concerning, however, is the new development's lot sizes as proposed, as they are not in keeping with the character of our River Bluff neighborhood. The proposal has five lots adjacent to me that are significantly smaller than any lot in River Bluff, and it would still be smaller than my lot if you combined all of them. I think about a hun, one and a half acres altogether. This would put five separate homes directly on our southern property line, at a higher elevation than our lot, and essentially destroying any sense of privacy and forever altering the way that we're able to enjoy our property. There's been no communication put forth by the owners in regards to the proposed covenants, our construction specifications, that they would be doing for the new construction. So, it's impossible for us to know what the size and character of these new homes would be and what further detriment it could cause to our property value. I also have concerns regarding potential drainage issues from the new development resulting from its higher elevation to our property. Our property is actually sloping in the back half of it. In the past, I had to make arrangements with the Westerveld Company, the previous owners of the property in question, to prevent erosion into our backyard from the runoff, a situation which will now likely worsen once you clear all the vegetation for the proposed sites. With that said, I believe that there are potential solutions to lessen the impact of the new development on our property, and I would like to discuss with its owners. Unfortunately, they have not reached out to us, and I've been unable to make contact with them despite repeated attempts. I fully support their rights as owners to develop their property as they wish within the confines of the law. And I appreciate their personal generosity to me. I spoke to them about two years ago when they first started uh, building or bringing fill into the property there. And uh, I'd rented the property from the Westerveld Company for eight years. It was a hunting lease that I had with them. And they allowed me to keep storing my equipment that I had over there uh, throughout the construction they were doing. But I believe that it's important to be good neighbors. And uh, I also believe the city has responsibility, if they're going to come in, that we preserve the value of the people that are already within the city limits. So, with that, uh, I humbly ask for a continuance of the approval of the proposal until the concerns uh, that we have brought up can be discussed with the petitioners and hopefully addressed. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you, Major York.
Any questions? Not yet.
All right, all right. All right, Mr. Chairman, we have Sandra Jacobs. Name and address for the record, please.
I'm not Sandra Jacobs, but I think you signed up in error. Is that correct? So, I, she's offered that I take her place if that is acceptable to the, to the board. My name is Maureen Mills. I'm at three-six-eight-five River Bluff Drive. That's actually the address that is listed on all of these notices and on your presentation. I have a number of concerns. I echo everything our HOA board says, and I thank them for their fantastic presentation. I don't have a full written statement, but some of the key issues that I'd like to ask that you keep in mind are the safety, I think is number one concern for a lot of us in the neighborhood. We have an enormous number of children in this neighborhood. As has been addressed, we have no sidewalks, and so all of those children are in the street. They have to be in the street. They don't want to necessarily be in the street. I support the traffic study that was requested by the HOA. I would like to request that it be done by a neutral third party, as opposed to somebody um, who the developer um, chooses. I would like to ask that the yield sign that is currently at the end of River Bluff, right in front of the neighborhood playground that a lot of children play at, that's also at a roundabout, um, be upgraded at least during construction and potentially permanently to a stop sign. Already, only with twenty houses in the River Bluff section, we already have traffic problems there, right in front of the playground. So, the developer is proposing to increase from twenty houses to an additional thirty, so more than doubling. You're a hundred and fifty percent here with already we have problems there. So, I'd like that changed to a stop sign. And some commitment to fixing any road damage that is caused during the construction phase, not just at post-construction, but also throughout. We all experienced a lot of the problems that went on during the McRice project that happened down McRice. Our section has still not been repaved. We had a lot of potholes, so I don't think it's sufficient to wait until all of the construction, which could potentially be years, is done. We need things like that fixed and addressed throughout, even just debris that's going to be left with, I think, Doug had mentioned, the number of trips up and down. If there's rocks throughout um, throughout the streets, throughout the neighborhood, not only does that pose a problem for windshields, which somebody at our recent HOA meeting had addressed some problems they've had with the McRice, problem with um, the McRice repaving with cracked windshields, and they were not able to get any resolution to that. Certainly, it's going to be worse here, um, with it being confined to such a small area. And also, just the kids that are in the street who are playing on bikes and skateboards. We don't want them running into debris and obviously crashing. In general, I'd like to request that the, the city outline expectations for good faith efforts in dealing, and I very much appreciate um, the comments that were, that were made to that end, good faith efforts in dealing with us as a neighborhood. Again, I'm the property immediately budding this. I've spent months now, I work from home a lot, I've spent months watching increasingly the trees get cut down toward my house with never any outreach or contact. My home, which is over a half a million dollar home, now looks out on the asphalt plant and Nucor and a cell phone tower and a power tower. People mentioned the value of our house. That's unreal to me. The deforestation that has taken place has increased the noise, the scent from the asphalt plant. I know we had something put in a couple of years ago that was supposed to help with that, and it did a large amount, but but certainly, this has decreased the quality of our daily lives in our neighborhood, in a neighborhood and a part of that neighborhood that all of the homes range between five hundred thousand and over a million dollars, as Jason noted. So, I think some good faith dealings with the neighborhood would be greatly appreciated when somebody's, oh, sorry, question?
They, they did what? They did what? What's the noise issue?
So, so the asphalt. The asphalt plant.
They just built an asphalt plant out there?
It's, it's across the river directly from this neighborhood.
What year did they? What year did they build that?
They didn't just build it. That's not what I said. I'm saying that it creates scent and noise issues for the neighborhood that were buffered a lot by that forestation, and now that so much deforestation has taken place, that has increased. I think I'm about out of time. I could have read some other comments, but I think I'll leave it at that. Happy to entertain any questions. Somebody did mention earlier on another case, one of you mentioned keeping the personality of the neighborhood, and I thought that was a really nice way of phrasing it. And we all enjoy our neighborhood very much and would like to keep the personality of the neighborhood and appreciate you all um, helping us, helping us do that, while keeping it a safe place for, for children. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope we, I hope nobody tries to build like a warehouse at the entrance of one of these neighborhoods.
Okay, that's all that's signed up. Uh, Tishner, would you care to come back up and address some of the concerns of those who spoke?
Uh, yes, uh, I would. Uh, I, I guess what we need to do is continue this until next month and let me meet with the homeowners association, you know. I didn't know Adam.
He wants to continue.
I guess we'll continue until next month and let me meet with the homeowners association and try to, you know, solve their issues, if that's okay with the board.
That's, that's your request in, in, in most cases when the petition requests, because I think there's so much disparity between what you want to do and what they want. But it sounds like you've got some common ground. If you work together, you might be able to solve some of these problems.
Sure.
Like we said, our, my biggest concern for the neighborhood is, like we said several times, is trip. It's been, this is county property, and if we don't get in the city, we have some regulations, some safeguards, it's, you know, through our regs and regulations we have on the books, then you're at risk. But also, we need to protect those neighborhoods that are there now. So, I think all of them had valid concerns. I, I applaud you for asking for the continuance.
Sure.
And strongly recommend, you don't have to come back next month. It takes two months. That's okay. Y'all get to a place where you're amicable and agreeable, and everybody feels like it's a win-win for both.
But you know, there was a little bit of a tone of, of that, that this neighborhood has complete leverage over whether this, this is developed or not. And, and this raw piece of land, this owner, whoever he is, I don't, I don't have no idea. Need to keep in mind that they have property rights as well. I mean, just because, just because, I mean, look, I've, I've got a friend that lives in the neighborhood, and I'm all about this buffer too, but just because someone has estate lots in the back of their lot, this parcel didn't sign up for that, okay? I mean, we, they have, they have a right to develop their property. And when, if you drove into that neighborhood, you saw that sub street, you should ask yourself, what is that for? Okay? And it goes into a parcel of land that could be developed. I mean, I just, I think for people to get in a room and get something done, it doesn't need to start with, you need to build, build the biggest, most expensive houses in the neighborhood. You have an obligation. And look, you can do your own traffic study. In fact, you've already done it. You count the houses, and you, you estimate the cars, and there's your traffic study. I mean, you can pay somebody, but you know, you can cram some cost down their, their throat, and you can cost them some time. But at the end of the day, you need to get in a room and say, look, they, they have the right to develop this land, and we want it to be as nice as humanly possible. And uh, we don't need to be too rich in our demands, or else, you know, you won't get where you need to go. I think you just, everybody needs to be a little open-minded. I think there's some things, like the buffer and all that, like backs up to Mr. Smith's house, I'm all, I'm all with you. Um, I think that's certainly reasonable, but to demand that someone build big, expensive homes in their neighborhood, I mean, he did say he's wi, he's willing to consider going into their HOA, but I think that's gonna last about twelve minutes in that meeting, okay? I mean, the way it's going right now. I, I just beg you to, to, everybody be a little bit, everybody try to wear the other man's shoes a little bit if you want to try to get somewhere with this and uh, be good neighbors. So, it's gonna take that.
Thank you.
Okay. That being said, uh, best for continuance officially?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, Commission, before us, we have a continuation request for annexation fifteen-twenty-five and subdivision seventy-twenty-five of River Bluff subdivision. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. Good luck.
Should we give folks a, a second here? All right. I think we can keep rolling here. Um, we have another companion case tonight. That is Ivory Bluff. This is three parts. Um, this is our first rezoning petition we've seen for RPD. That is a riverfront plan development, a subdivision for twenty townhouse lots and one open space, um, and a street vacation. This is um, at um, several addresses here, kind of surrounding Fifth Street Northeast, Fourth Street Northeast, and Sixth Street Northeast, about one point eight, one point three acre parcel, excuse me. So, we're gonna start off with the uh, rezoning to RPD. You can see here, we're right at that intersection of Jack Warner Parkway and McFarland Boulevard East. You can see those properties today. There's several single-family homes here, um, and they are zoned R. They'd like to rezone. They'd like to rezone from R to RPD for a townhome development at this location. Just getting some photos of the neighborhood, these are the homes that overlook Sixth Street Northeast, and then we have Fourth Street Northeast and Fifth Street Northeast as well. This is the proposed layout, we'll look at this more. With framework, since this is our first RPD rezoning we've seen, at a certain level of development, you do have to rezone to a riverfront plan development, they've hit that threshold here, which is why you're seeing this rezoning tonight. You can see there are several, seven, excuse me, single-family residential properties there today. They're proposing three-bedroom townhomes, three stories in height, about seventeen hundred square feet. They are proposing an HOA to manage common areas. Primary materials are brick masonry and cementitious siding, as well as some wood products. You can see floor heights varying between nine and ten feet. And they will have a pavilion, kind of patio area in the middle that's managed by the HOA. They're proposing sidewalks, both in and outside the development. They're proposing a ten-foot primary front setback, seven-foot secondary setback for the front, excuse me, and a seven-foot side setback and a zero-foot rear setback as part of this rezoning to a riverfront plan development. There are only required forty-four parking spaces, they are proposing forty-eight through a mix of two-car garages, one-car garages, tandem parking, and kind of some onsite parking as well. So zooming in on the plan here, starting at the north at Fifth Street Northeast. You can see units one, and moving south, those will be units one through thirteen, they do have those two-car garages, you can see here. Units fourteen through seventeen have a one-car garage, as well as that tandem space at the rear of the unit. And those units fourteen through seventeen open up into that courtyard, that you can kind of see more here, that common area, as well as some additional parking. You can see those two-car garages are carried all the way through units one through thirteen, as we move farther south here. Units eight through, eighteen through twenty, kind of that same setup, that one-car garage. There we go, and that tandem space there. Moving into kind of those buildings, you see four proposed buildings and that kind of primary front elevation here. As we move into the specific elevations, I've highlighted which building you're looking at in the bottom right. So building A, this is that front elevation, you can see the finestration is at about twenty-five percent here. Building B, moving around to the side elevations for both of these buildings. You can see those various materials, again, cementitious siding, trim, architectural shingles. Moving into building D, this is that primary elevation, you see there's garages, as well as primary doors to enter these townhome units. And moving to building C, again, that's four units instead of three, but kind of that same structure here. Here's a view of that courtyard and that master plan for the courtyard. Some sample floor plans here, you can see that two-car garage. Now moving into the subdivision, so again, twenty townhouse lots, one open space. You can see they have a lot of remnant lot lines on those existing structures today. You see that without contours here, and now you can see those proposed lots, so again, thirteen lots fronting Sixth Avenue Northeast, and then those kind of handful of units on Fifth Street Northeast and Fourth Street Northeast, as well as that open space. And again, here's that site plan. No variance requests on the subdivision. And lastly with this, they are vacating an alley that runs through the properties, you can see that alley in that yellow box here. You can see just another view of that public alley, staff comments on that alley. We did not receive any public comments on this petition, do you have any questions for staff?
Tishner?
Good evening, commission, Jimmy Duncan with Duncan Coker Associates here tonight, representing Ivory Bluff LLC. Crawford Nixon is a managing member of that LLC, he's here with me tonight, as is the project architect Chandler Overcash. Leota pretty much covered everything, one thing I'll point out that's a bit unique about this, when we started analyzing this site, it's obvious to everyone in this room that there's some blight surrounding this property. So we had a bit of a challenge with the units that face, that don't face the interchange, which is Fifth Avenue, Fifth Avenue Northeast. So the units eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, and likewise with units fourteen through seventeen, those units basically have two front doors. A front door to meet code facing the public right of ways, but the primary front entrance, similar to units one through thirteen, is facing the courtyard. And so we tried to do something really cool with the courtyard. Crawford's ideas, you know, a, a game day couple that might purchase one of these. Wife goes to the football game, the husband stays back at the townhouse, or vice versa. They've got a cool place to hang out, this nice pavilion with televisions, fireplaces, outdoor seating. So it kind of brings those other seven units kind of back to life with an amenity that is right out their back door. These are, these units offer sale, as, as Leota mentioned. Other than that, I'll attempt to answer any questions you have. And once again, I'm here with the first RPD application.
Back to back here.
So.
How was it navigating the RPD process?
With, with staff, I mean, I think-
I mean, that's our first one.
Collectively, I mean, there was a lot of new stuff that we all discovered along the way, but we worked through it. I mean, I, you know, personally, I think this block is a little bit too far removed from the river to be considered R or RPD, for that matter. But, I mean, the code's well-written and we're able to get through it, so.
Go, go back to the site plan a little bit, it shows the, I guess, that exit off of McFarland Boulevard. You don't mind, somebody?
So Mr. Right-
Sixth Avenue runs parallel to that, right?
That's right, so the signal is right there. So if you're coming, let's just say we're northbound on McFarland, going to campus.
Yep.
You're making that maneuver.
Yep.
You're going to Nucor, you're making that maneuver.
So to go in your prop, this property, you're gonna take a left there, right, onto Jack Warner?
Directly off the interchange.
Now, here's the one thing we talked about a little bit, I know it's not really problematic, it's problematic, but I don't think it really affects you and your development. You know, when people come off of McFarland Boulevard, they're going here, they're notorious to having to take a U-turn right there to go on Sixth Avenue. You know, it's not your problem, I wish they, I wish they'd have kept that access, you can see they closed it in, you know what I'm saying, when you come up back to McFarland?
Right.
That's, that's a mess, but is there, do these, they have access to get on Seventh, I guess, would be an option too?
So one thing, Mr. Right, let me, let me go back and be sure I'm on the same page with you.
Yeah, I was looking at the map.
One thing on, on Fourth that we're doing, when this interchange was modifications were done, Mr. Gardner and I both had the pleasure of working on that years ago.
It's all y'all's fault then.
You can't turn those-
It's Aldott's fault.
Aldott?
So, at, at the time, Sixth Avenue Northeast was here, when that was the city street. So due to the, the complications, the alignment with the interchange modifications fifteen years ago, Sixth Avenue was effectively cut off, so that portion was, was cut off. What we're doing with this project, just to clean up this mass of asphalt that is simply not needed, we're gonna build a cul-de-sac here, compliant with our sidewalks, to kind of clean that area up. So you've got Fifth Street Northeast at the north and Fourth Street Northeast at the south. Fourth Street Northeast is effectively a dead end today. Fifth Street Northeast, you know, scattered with, you know, numerous apartment buildings flanking that street on the, on the east, but primarily rental property, I'm gonna say ninety percent of those, ten or so houses, all rental properties. And I ventured to guess that, you know, the traffic's probably split, half of it comes off the interchange, half of it comes off of Seventh Avenue accessing Fifth, so. I mean, I really don't see a traffic problem, the only thing that we identified potentially is the cut-through traffic that this project could create. The solution to that is gonna be, we're gonna gate the parking lot on the north and the south end.
Cut through how, cutting through off of Fourth through Fifth to Fifth?
Can you go back to the site plan?
You're talking about cutting-
So with Fourth Street being a dead end here,
Yeah.
One that would wanna use the easy route, come off the interchange and get to their apartment building right there, would cut through this parking lot.
Yeah.
And so, we're proposing gates on each end.
I think I wanna go to Fifth and come on Fourth and go crap, I'm gonna turn up, go up through.
Well, and then, as you know, you, you come on over to Seventh, that's the street that goes down the Riverview Boat Landing, which is notorious for accident history. So, I mean, I, I think predominantly that the interchange at Sixth is the safest way in and out of these two blocks by far.
Get them on Sixth. I mean, can't control them coming off of McFarland. They're gonna do what they're gonna do.
Well, Sixth is signalized, and Seventh, and so-
Still, they're gonna, you know what they're gonna do, they're gonna do a quick U-turn right there, I know it's, I know it's-
Well, I mean, it's happening today.
I know, but it's, anyway. Something we talked about. Any other questions for Tishner?
If y'all have questions about the building, Mr. Overcash would be glad to come up.
I think it looks really nice.
It looks magnificent.
Any other questions for Tishner? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody sign up? Someone sign up?
Yes, I'm sorry, Steve and, Stephen Angelia Gaddis. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, my name is Steve Gaddis, I live at six twenty-three Fifth Street Northeast. I've lived with my wife, Angela.
You know who the boss is.
We have lived here for approximately forty years. We've seen all the apartment buildings, we've got approximately seven apartment units within a block of our neighborhood, all around us. Our backyard, our front door, our side, down the street. The road is already narrow as it is, two cars can barely meet going through. The U-turn that y'all are talking about, that was primarily made because there was a lot of big trucks that used to go to Nucor Steel. They would cut through our neighborhood and go down our street, and they couldn't make the turn at the end of our road.
The GPS was telling them-
The GPS was telling them one way, so-
When they first built, what is it, Watercrest, their GPS was telling them to turn left, and they were turning left into the neighborhood, and they're going down Fifth Street Northeast, and then having to turn back on Seventh Avenue.
So the big heavy trucks were tearing up the road and, you know, so.
There was complaints.
I'm just, some of the wording, young professionals and game day residents. Young professionals to me is someone who's just gotten out of college, trying to get started. My, our two boys graduated from engineering at the University of Alabama, they're both making six-figure salaries. I don't think either one of them could afford five hundred and eighty thousand at eight hundred thousand.
Is that what you're gonna sell them?
That's what, that's what it is.
That's what it says you're gonna sell for.
My concern is, you're gonna have a wealthy parent come in and buy one of these and put their college-age students in there, and that's gonna be student housing.
The only thing, only thing I would say is different about that would be, is they're, they're gonna own it, as opposed to renting it. So, if I'm the parent and I'm gonna own it, I'm gonna be like, take care of the place, we own it, you're gonna affect the values of all the property here. And I see those numbers, I'm like, we're like going, holy cow, that would be, you'd have some great comps that you could then, that increases your value.
But now, game day residents, and we're, I don't know any retirees that can afford, you may know somebody that could pay that, we can't.
Not in my neighborhood, they can't.
You know?
I'm always amazed by how much money is out there.
But the parking still concerns me, the traffic, you know, when there's a ballgame in town, graduation, that still concerns me in that area. We're gonna build twenty townhomes in that small of a area, and you've already got all these apartments with traffic coming in and out now, so.
Listen, someone can forewalk, Mr. Overcash draws, you need eleven buildings.
And I'm, and I'm concerned, what's, what's that gonna do to my property value? Is that gonna increase? We're, we're right there, next to the, the units fourteen through seventeen, we're right beside seventeen.
Yeah, we're the existing.
So when I open my, when I open my front door, that's what I'm gonna see is a three-story skyscraper.
Your house faces?
Faces Fifth Street Northeast.
Fifth Street, okay, you're not gonna look out the front door and be, you're gonna, you're gonna face that way.
Our living room is gonna, our living room window is going to face those-
Well, we'll hear, that's a great question asked about their buffering.
So.
Yeah, and from what I hear, they're gonna build a rock, a concrete wall that's gonna do around the pavilion, but like, from where my house is, like the corner into the thing, I don't see but green space.
Yeah, that's what I wanna ask them, actually, I'll address that.
Okay, but I, I just have mainly, I know they're gonna build it, it, I mean, as we said, we've got apartments all around us. What is the difference in an R and an RPD? I didn't understand that, and I still don't.
Riverfront plan development, right?
Yeah, so essentially, um-
And what does that affect my house?
Right, so your property is zoned riverfront, but then if you, if it's considered a large development such as this, then you have to go through some additional, you know, approvals as in going to Planning and Zoning Commission, and really, really showing everything that you're gonna do. But if you wanted to like renovate your house or something like that, that would be a small, small development or whatever, and so you wouldn't have to go through this whole process.
Okay, so it's not gonna-
Right.
It's an extra layer, they've gotta, they've gotta provide a lot more detail for us, it's another form of protection, especially being so close to our river.
Okay.
How it could impact that as well, so, they've, they've gotta clear a lot of hurdles.
Well, you know, we're, we're considering retiring in the next year or so, and we'd like to kind of have a small, you know, a peaceful place. And it's been a neighborhood, now we're gonna be the only residents on that side of that block.
Yeah, but you know what, this, this may help you.
I agree, I think this will help.
This, this is gonna, they're about to go uptown on you.
Yeah.
So you think it'll increase value?
Then get that, those prices?
Yeah, these two guys right here, they, they, they do some nice stuff.
Yeah, we, we, we see the developers a lot, and they, you can, you ought to ask them a couple places they've done in town, go look at them. They've, they've historically done a very nice project and job on these houses they're building. And they're, and they are selling them, and that's, that would give me a lot of peace that they're a for-sale product, not a, and they've designed the plans to tell you it's really not gonna be a part.
I, I, listen, I rented one of these houses when I was in college, and we, it was such a broke, broke bunch of people that lived over there. We knocked out a window, we couldn't afford to replace it, and we just froze.
I mean, it is a great area to live, it's a central location.
It's a live-in, that live area.
It's central, old town.
It's close to both of our work.
It's great, yeah.
And as for me, I have lived there for sixty-four years, just gonna point that out. I, I tell people I moved far away from home, across the street, one house down, so. I was there when, I was there before the apartment, just put it that way. There used to be-
Me too.
Orchards in the neighborhood, there's not anymore. I do have one thing, and again, it's, I don't understand, it's not that I'm complaining or anything, I don't understand, is it says the townhome units will not contain fire protection systems. With the thing being close to my house, what does that mean?
Well, nothing you've got near you has them now, I promise you that.
I'll let the architect answer, it's probably, they probably have separation wall in between them, it doesn't require a sprinkler system, I'm assuming. Does that, that be a nod?
Does that require?
Because you're doing separation walls, and, yeah, so they don't, they're not required, using a big project, you have to have sprinkler systems.
So it just means they're not gonna have sprinklers?
Sprinklers, but they're building firewalls. Oh, yeah, a hundred percent.
Okay, I'm, I'm just confused in that with the reason.
That's why you're here.
Beside our house, where the single garages are, where there's like for two cars, if they have guests or any extra families that comes, where do those extra cars, where, where are they gonna park?
Where the pavilions at.
Again, these are all good, good questions that maybe these guys can answer for us.
That's a real good question.
Anybody, I mean, but don't, we, we want you to finish your questions.
No, I mean, I'll just, I'll just, I mean-
I have one more thing, and it really is for y'all.
Talk to them, ma'am.
They had something that-
Talk to us in the microphones, we all can hear, get it on the record.
Well, I do have one thing, it's- Well, I do have one thing. It's, and it, again, it's going to be for them to answer. But you see on our street, which is the Fifth Street Northeast, you've got the tandem driveway going choop, choop, choop and then you've got that one that's going this way.
Kind of like a joint driveway.
It's making a loop this way. So if you're coming off of Sixth Avenue Northeast, then you're going to have to swing wide to get into it. If they curved it going that way, it'd be curved toward Sixth Avenue Northeast in McFarland. And I think it'd be easier for them to get in. Do you see what I'm saying? Unless they come up the, the hill. But that's just, that was just the thing. And I would be willing to figure out some other ways so I don't have to make the U-turn right there every day. And I would also, since you brought that, that stop sign be brought down because where it's at right now, you can't see traffic coming off of McFarland and people tend to go straight.
Yeah, they don't even stop. They just go straight through. Yeah, they don't even stop. And I can't tell you how many people run that light at the U-turn.
I've never done that before, I promise.
So it's, it's, I mean, I don't even know why they put a red light there. Anyway, so, but, um, I was just concerned with, you know, how, you know, how strict they were going to be about who they sold to and.
Whoever can write that check, they're going to sell it to. Let's hope they get it though, by the way.
Yeah, so, and I was just concerned about our, our, our property value with, you know, something like this. If it's going up.
I ain't moving, but I'm happy.
You'll be happy one day.
They will. My kids will.
All right, let's, let's, I've brought some very valid points. You guys want to come back up and answer a couple of those? I mean, I do have a question about that side buffer there next to their house.
So.
On lot seven, unit seventeen.
Mr. Wright, th- these are compliant setbacks. There's no buffer requirement here, but to the, the point about the wall, this is a six-foot tall masonry wall. The general intention there is to encapsulate the courtyard area. You know, with the, this bigger apartment, uh, development to the east, it's just to get that area secluded, make it private. Simple as that. The question on the parking, so we've got twenty units, uh.
Okay, we'll go back. You, you said you're not required to. Does that mean you're not going to do it? I mean, there's no buffer between seventeen and these folks' houses.
So the only thing required right there is a.
Answer the question I maybe Ms. Hornsby has.
A seven-foot side setback, Ms. Hornsby.
Seven-foot side, but you're just, it looks like you just got grass there.
That's it. Yes, sir.
So it'll just, they'll just, yeah, so there won't be any separation between their property here?
No, ma'am, other than the seven-foot side setback.
Consider putting a hedge of trees in there or something just to.
When we fully develop the landscape plan, possibly so, but it's just.
Put that into consideration. Yeah, they're going to look out the side of their house and see.
Within seven feet, it's going to be difficult to create a screen wall or something like that, but we can certainly look at it. So that seven, that seven-foot side setback duplicated again there at unit twenty, same thing, um, down on the south end. So as far as the parking, twenty units, which is forty spaces for the, the twenty units, plus the four visitor spaces is forty-four that were required to build. There's forty-eight shown. So those are a combination of garage spaces, the tandem spaces, and the eight spaces that flank the courtyard right here. So we're actually four spaces above what's required by code.
And the driveway for unit fourteen?
We're going to, we're going to look at that, see if we can improve that radius a little bit.
I think that was a good catch.
Any other questions for petitioner? I don't think they brought up anything that, they just addressed what we talked about, so no reason to come back up. Any other questions for petitioner?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You have any questions for the architect or the developer? They're here. You care to have a word? Name and address for the record, please.
Chandler Overcash, uh, with Overcash Design Studio. My address is one three five three eight Vineyard Way, Northport, Alabama. And I wanted to speak to a few of your points, uh, just briefly. Um, for one, the R P D process has been fantastic. I think it's been great. And to your point, it's to protect the homeowners and so it puts us through a lot more rigor as we prepare this and I've enjoyed the process on it. I don't want to be the first one out of the gates, but here we are. Um, in terms of the neighbors, the ones that live there, who have always lived there and who plan on staying, uh, I think you'll see that Crawford has put significant invest, investment in the design, um, to do, um, for twenty units. There's really very little repetition in design. There's focus on scale. Um, in terms of the third floor, they're all built into the roof line. And so this actually looks like a two-story townhome, even though it is three. In terms of the courtyard, I think that was one of the comments. The reason for the wall i- is not to be exclusive, but, but it will be a loud space. It will be a game day space. There'll be a lot of people. And so I think the wall, which is not concrete, it's brick, will actually be to protect the neighbors from what happens inside of there. Uh, so that was intentional to kind of respect that. Um, in terms of fire protection, we are doing the two-hour wall and we are not doing a sprinkler system. I wanted to just, I know we nodded at each other, but that, for the record. Uh, but I hope, I hope that the council and the community sees this as a benefit because this is, um, a lot of investment in this type of design to make it look this way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Nixon, care to have any comment?
Crawford Dixon, seventeen oh eight Sixteenth Street. I laughed when Jimmy said that the women were going to go to the football game and the men were going to stay and keep the kids.
That sounded right.
Y'all got that on the record. Uh, I, I actually thought the wall would be a good place to keep, keep the kids in the courtyard. But, uh, uh, just my experience, I, I do think that it will help your property value. If a day comes and I were able to purchase it, I think I'd have to pay more. But, but saying that, um, also my experience with this size, uh, property, most of them don't have a lot of people here. They become community with who's next door. So it's, uh, you know, it's from out of state, uh, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Texas, wherever. When they get here, they want to see their child and they become friends with their next-door neighbors. So usually the cars that are there are who they've met because they live next door to them and they, they, they don't come much. Uh, you know, unfortunately, I had a long presentation last week that was, uh, that I made a point, we, we just don't have a lot of parking at those, at those townhomes. It's, it's empty most of the time. Now, I can't speak for what's going to happen here, but we did try to consider, uh, consider that and there's, uh, more than anything, there's real high density all the way around us. And that's one thing that hadn't been mentioned. There's apartments and condos and I'm not sure if they're in the thousands, but they're well up in the hundreds. And so the pictures that, uh, were shown to begin with, each of those homes were actually the homes in this. There are seven homes, uh, that, that will come down and they range from nineteen thirty to nineteen forty. So that's the age of these homes. And so I'm taking seven and I'm putting in twenty and I know that sounds like a huge number, but it's, it's much greater than it is, but it's not a three-story apartment building. It's a three-story. And, and as Chandler said, under the roof means that third floor's literally in the attic. So it's not three floors and a roof above it. So we've tried to do some real aesthetic, uh, characteristics that look really good. I think Chandler's done a good job. And, uh, and I'll field any question you have. Uh, if I can, we'll try to address it.
A little quieter than last week, last month, Crawford said. Might want to take a seat and call it a good night.
Thank y'all for listening.
Thank you.
Well, if the, if the cars start overflowing over on, on the, on the street, then they're going to start getting towed away, so.
All right, any other, all right, we're going to close and we'll just have a quick conversation before we start taking some votes. Again, I, I think you guys have some good questions. They have some good answers, I think. I think this will be a great improvement for you, um, going forward. I mean, these guys have done nice projects before, been very successful. Never had any problem with them as far as developers, engineers, architects. So I hope that gives you peace of mind. That's my, my comment.
One of them is up for the key of the city. I mean.
How do you get that? Anything else? All right, let's, let's get some votes going, guys. All right. Here's our first R P D zero one twenty-five Ivory Bluff. Too long to read there, but you'll have a motion in a second.
Motion.
I can't.
Mr. Rumsey.
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved. Commission for F P S zero eight twenty-five Ivory Bluff. Again, twenty townhomes on one open space lot. You have a motion inside.
Motion. Second.
Ms. Hornsby.
Yes, yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion approved. Commission, we have a vacation request, zero two twenty-five vacating point zero five acres right away up a galley on said project. All those in favor, well, this is a voice vote really. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it. Good luck. I'll see what all those realtors from here tonight.
All right, we'll keep rolling for the second half of the agenda, folks. Starting with our preliminary plats. First up, we have S seventy-two twenty-five McNelly Fair subdivision, consisting of four lots on approximately thirteen point four acres, located at fifty-nine hundred through six thousand and six. New Waterme- Watermelon Road, excuse me, Council District Three. Can see, uh, we're kind of just right past the dam here on New Watermelon and McRice Ferry Road. Uh, just to clarify, this is a three-lot subdivision now. This changed after, um, the legal notice was posted. This property here is no longer included. Uh, so we're just be looking at a three-lot subdivision tonight. And you can see that here, those three lots, um, that are proposed here. There's some existing structures on site. Uh, two remain at this time. You see that without contours here. We do have four variance requests. We did not receive any public comment. Do you have any questions for staff?
Engineering.
We don't have any objection to those requests.
Thank you, sir. Petitioner.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Chris Centel, Centel Engineering. This was brought before you a year ago and the fair portion of it was going to be part, uh, purchased by McNelly, a small portion of it, but the bank refused to let it go. So we're now back in front of you because they couldn't, couldn't make it work.
Same plan?
Uh, same plan essentially. I mean, we, we altered one right there by the barn, just one little lot line, but other than that, it's the same exact plan. No changes.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Anyone care to speak for or against this petition? Come forward, please. Name and address for the record.
I'm Jennifer Colvin, um, five nine three seven Lake Ridge Avenue. Um, Lot Two backs up to our property and I, I guess when we moved there about twenty-five years ago, I just couldn't imagine that anything would be past the woods. Um, I, and I guess I just wanted to say that I've, it's going to disrupt our privacy. Our family enjoys as we look out into the woods. And then the, like, so where's the wildlife going to go? It's just, with all the construction all around that area, it just seems like it's driving the, uh, the deer in. Um, I don't know. I just told my neighbors I'd be the spokesperson and I don't know if I'm the best one to be it, but, um, I just wish they'd leave it alone. Thanks.
Thank you. Care to speak to that, please? Yeah. Explain the subdivision, why we're.
Okay, uh, this is not a typical subdivision where we're building roads. We're not building anything. This is an inheritance property between three sisters. Lot Two is an inheritance. So they're equally dividing it up. So we're not planning on any new construction on Lot Two whatsoever. It will stay wooded as long as she doesn't, unless she wants to build a house on it.
Right, it's a two-and-a-half acre lot, so a pretty good, pretty good lot size.
Largest, very big state lot.
All right, anyone else care to speak for or against? Having heard none. All right, commission before us, we have S seventy-two twenty-five McNelly Fair subdivision, consisting of four lots and three. Uh, four variance request, engineering has no issues with. You'll have a motion in a second.
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hornsby.
Yes, yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
All right, next up we have S seventy-three twenty-five Re survey of Sally Hamner Road subdivision. This is consisting of two lots on approximately eight point three acres, located east of fourteen eight thirty Sally Hamner Road and north of fourteen seven five five Sally Hamner Road. This is not in city limits. Can see we're kind of sandwiched between Highway forty-three and Highway sixty-nine up on the lake. You can see there's three lots here today. They are vacant. Um, they would like to split those up into two and just for the record, north is now on your left. We turned sideways here. So they're splitting those three lots into two here. Uh, you can see that without contours. Uh, we do have one variance request. We did not receive any public comment. Do you have any questions for staff?
Engineering.
No objection.
Petitioner.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Chris Centel, Centel Engineering. Uh, we're combining the lot, Lot One is combining two lots into one because the only buildable spot is in the dead center of where the lot line is. We're adjusting Lot Two R so he can build a barn to. And septic's already in place.
Say again?
The septic tanks are already in place in preparation.
Any questions for petitioner? Anyone care to speak for or against this petition request? Having heard none. Commission before us, we have the re survey of Sally Hamner Road subdivision, S seventy-three twenty-five. One variance request, cap sewer, engineering has no issues with. You'll have a motion in a second. Mr. Rumsey.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, motion approved.
All right, next up we have S seventy-four twenty-five Melon, Melvin, excuse me, subdivision, consisting of two lots on approximately zero point seven two acres, located at thirty-five twenty-five Oak Bend Road, Council District Three. Can see we're kind of in the same area as we were earlier, north of the Black Warrior River, off of McRice Ferry Road. You can see this existing lot today does have one structure on it. Uh, they'd like to split that lot into two. As you can see here, um, those second lot created, and you see that again without contours. Uh, they do have a cap sewer variance. There is not sewer in this area, though it is in city limits. We did not receive any public comment. Do you have any questions for staff?
Engineering.
No objections.
Petitioner.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Marty Montgomery, Montgomery Ankle Land Surveying, uh, representing Melvin, Bruce Melvin on this two-lot subdivision. Mr. Melvin was trying to give his, uh, sister-in-law that piece, portion of property and with it being in city limits, it had to be a subdivision. And, uh, they couldn't go into that subdivision because of their mortgage on their house. It was going to cost them too much money to just to come out and do it. So this was the best way to make that lot. They're not wanting to build on it and, uh, they just want it there for, uh, their use. So they, we made it a standalone lot.
Backs up to Acadian Place. They stick around for the.
They, they all live.
Lucky you, right? Any questions for petitioner?
Well, I mean, I'm just curious. I mean, on this, on the plat, it looked like the swimming pool is all within the lot, but that Google map picture, aerial view, I swear it looked like the pool was into Lot Thirteen of Acadian Place.
Those are never, those are never accurate.
Okay. Good.
I do have a question. I mean, is, is the pool that on the property line? Like, I mean, the fiscal?
It's, it's back there at it. There's no, there's no, uh, from a city standpoint, that's not any kind of setback concern or anything?
They were probably there first, weren't they?
It's already there.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm just curious for future reference.
It would be non-conforming.
Okay, that's why, yeah, okay. It's there now. All right, any question, any other questions for petitioner? Thank you, Marty. Anyone care to speak for or against this petition request? Having heard none. Commission before us, we have the Melvin subdivision, S seventy-four twenty-five. One variance request, cap sewer, engineering has no issues with. You'll have a motion in a second.
Motion.
Ms. Hornsby.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
You could be an octagon before we get through here.
Yes. I go to the restroom.
You can talk fast.
Let's get it done.
All right, next up, we have S seventy-seven twenty-five, re-survey of lot seventeen and eighteen Edgewater, Phase One B, consisting of two lots on approximately two point one nine acres, located at fourteen nine twenty-two and fourteen nine thirty Edgewater Drive. This is not in city limits. You can see, again, we're kind of, uh, sandwiched between Highway forty-three and Highway sixty-nine on the river. There are two lots here today. They are just readjusting that middle lot line in between them. Uh, it's kind of more clear here. I'll, I'll draw here, that is the existing lot line roughly. Uh, they're just readjusting that middle lot line between the two properties. They do have a variance request. We did not receive any public comment. Do you have any questions for staff?
Engineering.
No issues.
Petitioner.
Hey, I'm Diane Darden. I am lot eighteen, um, fourteen nine thirty Edgewater Drive. My neighbor, Thomas, and Katie Brown, uh, could not be here tonight. He said that I could call him if you guys need to talk to him. Um, we're just simply moving it over. That, that area is basically somewhat of a cliff. UPS, FedEx, and the US Postal Service will not deliver our stuff down the driveway, so we just simply wanna make a little more area where they can turn around. That's, um, and Thomas and Katie are actually donating this property to us, so.
You mean the road falls off so much, it scares the FedEx guy?
Well, weekend guys will come down, weekday guys won't. Uh, US Postal Delivery Girl will never come down. So she leaves all of our valuable, uh, deliveries at the.
This is gonna help them.
On the ground.
So it's like that, are you kind of widening that driveway there? Or is that, is that driveway widened there for them to?
Where, if you can see, where's, can you, Mark, can I do this?
And your neighbors owe you a favor, by the way, for sitting through three hours of.
Can I, Mark?
Yeah.
Okay, let me see if I can see it. All right, so, let's see. This is the back of what we have now where you can turn around. It's probably eighteen feet. So we are adding, our property line actually runs right down the back of that driveway, that, where, the little bit of a turnaround. So we have, are moving it over. That is what we're adding.
Okay.
Uh, and maybe, I think there's a tiny bit that goes right through there. So it still leaves over an acre for Thomas and Katie, and it adds us just to, I forgot how many square feet. But now we will be able to extend that where they can actually come down, back around, and us too. We have grand, we, I have a mother-in-law who will not, we have to back her out. So that, that will be beneficial. And Thomas and Katie, it's, it's just really useless property, so.
Very nice.
That is nice.
Okay, thank you. Have any questions for anybody? Nope, thank you. Anyone care to speak for or against this petition request? Having heard none. Commission before us, we have S seventy-seven twenty-five, re-survey of lot seventeen eighteen Edgewater. One variance request, cap sewer, engineering has no issues with. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Mr. Rumsey.
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
All right, S seventy-eight twenty-five, re-survey of the re-survey of lot one, Tosioli subdivision, consisting of one lot on approximately two point four acres, located at ten twenty-three through twen- ten twenty-five Fifteenth Street, one thousand and six through, I'm sorry, the numbers are killing me.
Sorry.
Ten, ten, Sixteenth Street and fifteen hundred tenth Avenue, Council District Two. You can see, we are just, uh, right across from Central High School here, uh, just south of Fifteenth Street. See that property today? You all saw this at the beginning of the year for an alley vacation on Sixteenth Street. Um, they're combining that as well as their two properties to the north of that alley in the subdivision. You can see discreting, uh, one lot here. Uh, you can see that without contours. They do, um, have a variance request for sidewalk construction. That is just for, um, these two dead-end streets here. Uh, we did not receive any public comment. Do you have any questions for staff?
Engineering.
We don't have an objection to those sidewalk requests.
Petitioner.
Doug Varan, thirty-two hundred Rice Mine Road, Northeast Tuscaloosa, three five four oh six. Um, we just want to combine the property to accommodate an, an expansion.
Any questions for petitioner? Anyone care to speak for or against? Commission before us, we have the re-survey of, re-survey, of the re-survey of lot one, Tosioli subdivision, with one variance request, sidewalk construction. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hornsby.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion approved.
All right, next up, S seventy-eight twenty-five, re-survey of the re-survey lot two camp subdivision, consisting of two lots on approximately six acres, located at thirty-seven fifty-five and thirty-eight oh one McFarland Boulevard East. This is Council District Six. You can see, we're right at the interchange McFarland and I twenty here. Uh, you can see that property today, there's a hotel and storage here. Um, they're just adding a lot line right here, um, to split those into two. Uh, you can see that without contours here as well. Uh, we do have a variance request for public street frontage that is for, uh, this lot here. We did not receive any public comment. Do you have any questions for staff?
Engineering on the variance request.
No objection.
You didn't draw this, did you, originally?
Not originally, no, sir.
What a mess.
Eric Camner, TTL, thirty-two hundred Rice Mine Road, Northeast. Uh, it's late. I'll take any questions y'all have. It's almost eight.
We like that.
No questions? Thank you, sir. Anyone care to speak for or against? Having heard none. Commission before, we have S seventy-nine twenty-five, re-survey, the re-survey again, lot two camp subdivision, with one variance request, public street frontage. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion. Second.
Mr. Rumsey.
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
All right, S eighty twenty-five, re-survey of lot seventy-four G, the gates of Emerald's Edge and unplanned land, consisting of two lots on approximately twelve acres, located north of fourteen six twelve Lake Island Road, Council District Three, and not in city limits. You can see, uh, we're north on the river here off of Sexton Bend Road. Um, you can see those.
It's a lake, Leota, it's a li- it's a lake, not a river. Called it a river, second time tonight, you said it's a river.
I know, we've been all over the same place. But you can see these properties here today, there's three of them. Um, you can see they're proposing two lots here from those three. Um, lot one, proposed lot one's in the county, um, they're giving some land over to, uh, proposed lot seventy-four GR. You can see in, um, no contours here. We do have three variance requests. We received no public comment. Do you have any questions for staff?
Engineering.
We're in favor of those variance requests.
Petitioner.
Robert Martin, Duck and Coke Associates, um, essentially just rotating a lot line, get some more property for lot seventy-four, seventy-four G.
Any questions for petitioner? Anyone care to speak for or against petition requests? Care to speak for it, against it? Thank you. All right, commission, last one. S eighty twenty-five, re-survey of lot seventy-four G, uh, three variance requests, engineering has no issues with. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Ms. Hornsby.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion approved. Anything for staff?
God bless America.